Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and begin with the innovation and legislative initiatives delivered by Mr. Jansen, please rise.
Please rise and let us pray. Good grace, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, and the strength that he provides each and every one of us. Lord, we just ask you for your blessings and as we move forward and guide our way through growing this city, Lord, we just thank you for all the blessings that you give us. Please watch over our first responders and our militaries that deserve our peace words in your son's Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) to the pride of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is called to order. Madam Golding? Councilmember DeMong? Here. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Here.
Councilmember Mesa?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Mayor Hoffman?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the minutes, item A.
I move that we approve the minutes from the council briefing held on July 29, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion from council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Madam Minipost, motion carries. Item D.
I move that we approve the minutes from the budget workshop held on August 1st, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Madam Minipost, motion carries. Item C.
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on August 1st, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Madam Minipost, motion carries. Item D.
I move that we approve the minutes from the budget workshop held on August 2nd, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Madam Minipost, motion carries.
I would, maybe not want to make a motion real quick.
Sure.
I move to amend the agenda to take items J and K from the City Manager section and move them to the end of the agenda pursuant to the suspension, section 233 of the city code.
We have a motion in the floor. We have a motion and a second, any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember DeMong?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Just for those of you who may not understand, we have three items that follow the BLSC items on our agenda. We're gonna go ahead and bump those up so that we can get anybody that's not involved with the BLSC on their way whenever, um, whenever they'd like to, once those issues are discussed. Um, moving on to council announcements. Ms. DeMong?
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the latest class of Ospreys who have left the nest last week and the new class that is coming in next week. So, it's exciting.
Any other announcements from council?
Just like to congratulate our police department for filling out the next class of Citizen Police Academy that starts next week. Do we have any spots left or are we done? Done full? Two spots left, so it's a really great program. Uh, you learn a lot about our police department, uh, and our community at the same time. So encourage anybody who's interested to look into that on our city Facebook page or police department Facebook page or website. No other announcements. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, we have two cards that are not attached to an agenda item. We'll start with Verna Griffin. If you wanna come up to the podium and give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, my name is Verna Griffin, 229 Lower Street at Neptune Beach. First of all, I wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak to you. I am an ambassador for pickleball. That means that I support and promote the game of pickleball. I'm also a nationally certified instructor of pickleball. I've come to you tonight to encourage you to provide more courts. Out here on this island, we have three major cities, Neptune Beach being your smallest, but they have the most courts. Then Donner Park, which is in Atlantic Beach, has four courts and they're getting ready to build four more. The word on the street is that you're building two more at Gonzales. We would love for you to build four more. This sport has exploded across the nation. It started in 1965 in the state of Washington. It is the fastest growing sport in the United States. Right now, we have 72 countries in the world playing pickleball. There only need to be 75 to get into the Olympics. We think that will happen very quickly. What I'd like to propose to you all is that you look at your park at South Beach Park. On the tennis court, you have two painted courts. There's plenty of room to build or paint very cheaply two more courts, possibly four. That will give you all at least six courts. Right now, at Jarboe Park and at Donner, on any given Saturday morning, there will be over a hundred people waiting to play pickleball. We invite each of you to come out and come play pickleball and enjoy the game. So therefore, I don't want to speak any longer, I just wanna encourage you to at least put four pickleball courts at Gonzales. That will help relieve the overweight time to play this wonderful game. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Applause aren't really necessary, although congratulations for that breaking news that you're almost eligible to be in the Olympics. April Howard. And while April is approaching, if everyone could just turn off their cell phones, silence your cellphone. If you don't know how to do that, just find a molecule nearby, bring it in. And if you can, please, um, limit any discussions because it adds up with this many people in the room. Ms. Howard, seeing instructions, seeing an address, enough three minutes.
My name is April Howard, live at 29, San Pablo Circle South. And I've come back to the council because my request to put up an eight-foot solid fence remains denied, months after waiting, due to the city's inadequate redevelopment code and lack of appropriate appeals or variance process, which really should be taken care of on the city's time, not my time. Uh, my request should have been approved immediately months ago, and I'm not sure why, just, uh, I know it's not a problem for the council, because it's not your life every day, but it is my life every single day that I walk out my back door with having no privacy nor safety. Um, it's sending a very clear message that the city has no concern for my safety at all. So I thought I'd read, um, a little recap of the police reports for just the last 12 months for the dependence of that property that the city refuses to allow me to protect myself against. Um, so on October 4th at 9:00 p.m., there was a suspicious transient that was trespassed. On October 30th at 4:00 p.m., there was a suspicious transient sleeping on the sidewalk, called in by the business. He was trespassed on October 30th, they did file a trespass affidavit with the police. November 2nd at midnight, a suspicious person was called in. November 3rd at 10:22 p.m., or AM, sorry, suspicious transient at the thrift store was called in for harassing customers inside the business. On January 28th at 10:00 a.m., a suspicious person was called in for trying to open up the store's door with a coat hanger. On January 29th at 2:00 p.m., a burglar vehicle was reported when a woman said a laptop was stolen from her vehicle while she was in the thrift store. On January, sorry, February 7th at 7:30 p.m., a suspicious transient was called in for loading in the parking lot. On March 26th at 11:00 p.m., a party was called in, and the owner of the business was having a large party. On April 5th at 10:00 p.m., a suspicious transient was called in for three people that fell surviving behind the business. One of those people was a six foot, three inches tall, which would be three inches below the six foot, and say, "You guys would like their foot out." On April 8th at 5:00 p.m., a disturbance was reported by the heat salon for a transient yelling on the sidewalk. On April 30th at midnight, suspicious was, person was called in, um, someone banging on the door behind the building. On June 3rd at 1:00 a.m., a light was caught in, two men beating up someone in, like near the building. One of those men, Mr. Johnson, was six foot, three inches, well, he was issued a trespass warning. On June 8th at 1:00 a.m., one of the businesses called in for drunk paraphernalia carried over the property. On June 10th at 11:00 p.m., suspicious transient was reported behind the business. Mr. Johnson, six foot, three, returned and was arrested because it was his second time. And on July 3rd, 4th, at 1:00 a.m., suspicious person was called in, uh, being parked in the dumpster behind the dumpster area. So, um, I know you guys don't live like us, but unfortunately we do, and we would like to have, and so, um...
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Well, if I were shot... (Inaudible).
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Liza Rochelle, and I'm actually here to discuss the Wilmer, uh, Wilmer Marina property. Some of you may be aware or familiar with the Dockside Seaford restaurant located right at the boat ramp, while I am one of the owners there. And that property is held by Jacksonville Beach City Lees, which we have the lease, a long-term lease, which we retail, we tend to maintain, uh, for several years. And part of my concern and why I'm here tonight is to secure the fact that the recommended or proposed, uh, vision for the second, for the reroute of Second Avenue, um, directly impacts the leased property that I currently hold the lease for. Um, and so, being kind of excluded of that conversation in regards to how that's going to impact my business, the likelihood of my employees and all of my patrons, I really would like to understand and have a little more clarity before everyone kind of sees the ultimate goal, which we all, in this community, are aware, that Second Avenue floods, uh, probably ten times a year where it's impassable for several hours. We've all been impacted by that. No one more probably than myself with our own business there trying to operate. However, the major tract of Second Avenue does cross property belonging to the city of Jacksonville Beach, which I currently lease. So, um, without much disturbance, and we do all want a better improvement for all, there just needs to be a little bit more clarity before we push the bill button about how that transition is gonna happen to your current tenants. I've been an excellent tenant and I have been a promoter in our community my entire life, and so I tend to keep it up, but I do want to be part of the conversation rather than being, sort of, working to that. So that's why I decided to attend today's hearing, because it directly impacts my business, my employees, and my livelihood. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if we didn't realize that your comments were attached to an agenda item that will be discussed later in the evening. I don't know if you can say, but we'll ask our planning director to address that.
No problem, I'll still be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that that is all of the comments, um, for general courtesy of the floor, so we will move on to our, um, agenda items, our regular agenda items discussed. Would you like to present the financials?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ashley Johnson, CFO. Before you tonight, you guys have a wonderful, 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 representative of the city, the executive commissioner of the budget. And as always, I'm going to turn it to the board.
Thank you, and motions?
I move to accept the monthly financial report for the month of July 29, 2022.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions or concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, item D.
So this agenda meeting tonight is regarding the state statutes of the city of Orange recently announced, which it's a new standard, that requires a door lock monitor system, which keeps an elevator locked in place until the doors are ready to be closed. Uh, these new standards need to be implemented by the start of 2022. Uh, the city has two elevators, which were built in 1995 and 2008 respectively, and they probably do not meet the standards. So we are proposing a full modernization of both elevators in an amount not to exceed $261,986. And that, according to current officers here tonight, we welcome the technical improvements that I have prepared.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, and motion?
I move that we approve the modernization and upgrade of two elevators by the Houston Club Elevator Corporation, utilizing the Sourcewell contract, 472 SWA 20B002A, for an amount not to exceed $261,986.
Second, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Mesa.
Question, I think I always ask these questions, especially in terms of the money, to make a sure work out of this inaccurate amount, and...
Well, to the best of our knowledge, this is inaccurate, as well, it has an agreement with the elevator company and they provided some hope, um, so we cannot expect any changes to this, you did have a contingency for any opportunity, and we also added additional funding for some electrical work.
Did they talk about any supply issues?
We have the...
Today, we haven't seen any, or, the restaurant owner in the late, but he's not current, the late's in there, but we haven't, so we anticipate, so that's what we're trying to get, uh, to use with as possible, no control, well, impactful here in front of the...
Any other questions from council? Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Ms. Scott? Item C. The last item on.
Um, so this item is a telecommunication audit firm recently reviewed the city's prominent data lines and identified five analog circuits that can be eliminated, which represents almost $10,000 in monthly payments to the city. So council is being asked to approve an audit agreement and authorize a one-time payment to this vendor not to exceed $119,622, which represents 12 times the monthly payments passed at the opening agreement. It should be noted that we expect to receive this $119,000 in savings each, in each future year funded. Any other questions?
You have a motion?
I move to approve the audit agreement with this by last approved, which we actively can authorize a one-time payment of $119,622 and 12 cents.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions or comments from council? Um, do we have any, how long, should we, how long we have to watch that one for use?
I do not know when they originally established, so I can't tell you when they came out.
And how often is an audit like this typically done? Have we ever had one before?
We've never had a chronic maintenance audit like this. We do interval use periodically as our technology changes and evaluate kind of thing to be eliminated, but this is the first time we've had an external lender looking at a similar like this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, item D, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen, this is Dustin Scott, an ancient client of the city, and, uh, I'd like to request that the city council authorize the, um, city manager to just keep on the contract for pension administration software. Um, in January of next year, a few resources will be displayed in the MUNIS implementation, as we previously discussed. However, that implementation means that MUNIS will no longer, will not be able to populate estimated contributions, which is a requirement of the city ordinance to be calculated, and, uh, that software just doesn't come back. We were advised by outside, as the council already reviewed, to, um, obtain a separate software through that calculation. So in the process, we paired that with, uh, something we've been wanting to do for a long time, but get, um, dynamic calculations to be able to be able to run themselves. Like, maybe, uh, that, uh, to, uh, along with, um, calculations, or personal data. Um, I spoke with the CIO, uh, designing the software for the RFP to recover the structure in a way that would meet the city's, um, security standards and, uh, the employees would also have to have two factor on communication whenever they sign in. Um, we put out the RFP, we had three responses, the question, maybe, met, and, uh, April 1st, the company, um, city already made extensive ownership of this company, they gave the city's pension companies actuaries, and then, uh, for 32. So they already have a lot of this data, um, that, um, we, uh, um, so it's way before the people need to call.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, if I have any questions?
I move that we award RFP number 062122 for pension administration software to Gabriel Roder Smith and Co. and authorize a mayor and city manager to execute the final contract.
Second, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Mesa.
Thank you, um, thank you for looking out for the pension software. Is it compatible with the new ERP system that we know of? Is the HR system, as we've been going online, many years?
The new system, the whole, it's, we're able to, um, this new system's called pension soft, and they work with MUNIS that many years before, uh, these colleagues, so they're familiar with the process, but it doesn't really go back, or, you know, it's not that employees will not be able to access information from pension software within MUNIS, but MUNIS will be able to transfer this information to the pension software.
So there is a compatibility between the two platforms?
Some, I mean, I don't know how to, if it goes one way, so it's not directly compatible, but it, they do work, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, Chief Smith? (Inaudible). Item D.
Good evening, council. Our language management, that would be, please, are requesting service vehicles to transfer four patrol vehicles that will be served up to the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office for initial and continued precision of mobility. (Inaudible).
Commander Ringham? Motion?
I move that we approve four out-of-service police vehicles to be donated as surplus to the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office in lieu of option.
Second, we have a motion and a second, Ms. DeMong.
Thank you. Um, well, Mr. Ringham, come on back up.
I have a second, though.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Um, I just want you up there so I can say, "Thank you to you and the group for us including in the memo that..." Okay, so while we're not optioning it, because it sounds like, "Oh, we're just going to give it to JSO instead of us optioning it," which then you'd be getting money, what we are doing is we're getting that free training in exchange for these vehicles for them to use, so it ends up being a net gain for us over the long term, uh, when we look at it financially. So I just want to make sure I said, "Thank you for including that," and make sure everybody else knows about that, too.
Mr. Mesa?
Yes, uh, Chief Smith, thank you for incorporating the pit maneuvers. I've seen it myself done, uh, we used to live in LA, and it's a good maneuver to have, and thank you guys very much. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, item F, Mr. Ties.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jason, Fox and Recreation. Uh, this item we just asked from the council to approve a lease for 72 BZ golf carts, of course, to replace the 72 that we've completed.
Thank you, and motion?
I move that we approve the lease agreement with the Huntington National Bank for 72. Need to give golf carts for 52 months according to, uh, OMEA contract, R210201, and authorize a mayor and city manager to execute the lease agreement.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any questions from council? Ms. DeMong?
Do these golf carts do all the cool things that current golf carts do, like they stop when you go to places to get coastles to, and you can order from them and such?
Yes, uh, this name, one upgrade version of the GBS.
Can the software be compatible without our app and such?
It is.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Portwell, call. Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries.
Item G, Ms. Adeline.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brother Ireland, managing development director. Uh, this is the second public hearing for the Beach Marine Development Agreement. I don't have anything new to report. Um, the agent for the property owner developer is here, as long as, as well as the engineer for the city of Jacksonville, if you have any follow-up questions, Brother, myself, and them. Uh, this development agreement was approved by the city of Jacksonville last Tuesday at their regular council meeting, um, but I will respond to the comments from the restaurant owner. I know that our staff, not me personally, has discussed with them that these plans are conceptual and the property owner has, property owner's agent, excuse me, has also advised that they spoke with the restaurant owner, and we will both ensure that we work directly with her so that that lease is, is monitored, because they are leasing some more. So we'll, we'll make sure when we get down to the details of actual parking, we will go over to that.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. We do have one's, keep your card before we get to the motion, um, from Teresa O'Brien. Ms. O'Brien, you have, uh, if you can state name and address, we'll have three minutes to address the council.
Teresa O'Brien, 1602, just out in the north. Um, this is my second appearance, and we are asking from our caretakers, or all of your caretakers, for the numerous colonies of cats, cat that Jacksonville Beach, well, where, um, nothing has been done, uh, to address the dumping. Um, we have eyewitnesses from last week in the middle of the day, um, Dockside Seaford Restaurant, eyewitnesses, the two cats were dumped, again, in the middle of the day in those colonies. Caretakers cannot come up with a story. My home is a half a mile from that well, where, and I found myself trapping feral cats in my parking lot this year. Uh, nobody's got time for this, so please, uh, we are pressing that the dumping be addressed. Um, also, there needs to be a plan, uh, for developers, a little tour of the restaurant, they need to do a little tour with us, because relooking ferals, feral cats is just not an option. Um, they, it will just not be a very good scene, it won't be healthy, this is animal protein, you can't take away their entire habitat, and expect them to go to the parking lot in the sportsy sun all day long. So, um, you know, coming up with a plan, going to work with us, is really the only positive outcome, I don't have, uh, I don't have, uh, open for some in there, and leaving those cats in the rim to save the zoo. So I thank, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brian, and motion, please?
I move that we approve the development agreement, uh, approval for the Windward Marina property.
Second, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Mesa.
Uh, just have a question, I don't know if it's a city manager thing or the city of Jacksonville, uh, is there anything animal control can do from Jackson Beach or Jacksonville to put a stop to this? And obviously, it's illegal, like, what these people are doing, dumping cats just in the street.
While, while we do supplement Jacksonville's animal control, I think everything that's occurring right now is on private property, and right now, there's nothing that's actually detrimental to the cats at this point. Uh, I believe we'll probably have conversations with, you know, with Mr. Hanline, the representative of the property owner, to make sure that as we approach construction activities, uh, that we do the same environmental care that we would of other animals and wildlife in the area.
Ms. Golding?
Um, Mr. Hanline, if you could, please come to the podium. I just wanted to mention that, I don't know if the Sierra Club contacted the rest of the council members, but I did share the email that the Sierra Club, um, sent me, and, uh, Ms. Ireland sent that to Mr. Hanline. Just for the record, I wanted to, uh, bring that up and, and get your comments regarding the Sierra Club's concerns.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, to your Hanline, 1301, place overboard. We did, uh, we received those comments, uh, from the Sierra Club, thank you both for Thank you both for sending them to us. As you know, I hope you know, we did respond to them in writing, which I assume we are forwarded to the Sierra Club. We're happy to meet with them and involve them as we move forward with the design and permitting of the road, additional parking, et cetera. In my response to them, I detailed that there are some things we can do and some things we can't do. We want the road to be safe. We want it to be designed so that it isn't subject to the same flooding that it is today in its current condition. We will be working with the City of Jacksonville Public Works Department, who has jurisdiction over that road, and we will be working with both City of Jacksonville and City of Jacksonville Beach in the design and permitting of the road. As I said at the beginning of my email back to the Sierra Club, and as I said a couple weeks ago, there will be a net gain of conservation-protected property, not a decrease, but a net increase of conservation-protected property. That was a concern of theirs. They also had a concern that the large hundred-acre property need to be donated to the City of Jacksonville. They made a passive recreational park. They wanted to make sure that would be, just what I said, passive recreation. We pointed out to them the provision in the development agreement which is for you, which states that the uses that the City of Jacksonville and the public put to that land once it is donated must be consistent with your, with the City of Jacksonville Beach Conservation Protected double plan and use category. So that should be assurances that the city of Jacksonville may really put in that way. So we also mentioned that, obviously, the road design and permitting will be reviewed by numerous governmental agencies, state, federal, and local, and those regulatory systems I built into them intended to minimize impacts and deal with any impacts through mitigation. There is a detailed regulatory structure on that. So those are a handful of the things that I respond to them on. And if you have any other detail, if you, this council or this attorney would like.
No, I think, I mean, personally, I appreciate your response to their questions. I did applaud your response to the Sierra Club and hopefully, and I encourage them to contact you to sit down and discuss their complaints further if they have any additional concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. DeMong. Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, my question's for either administration or the chief of police services in there. Is there a law against parking animals? And, um, I don't think so. People switch places. If there is, I urge citizens to apply animal control for the non-emergency number to report illegal activity. So if we have to, we definitely, if we, uh, we should, uh, we should, uh, record.
Any other comments or questions from council? Madam Clerk, call. Councilmember Golden?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. Item H. Mr. Barron. Spent a little bit of everything today, I mean.
All right, mayor and council, this is the public works, too. We have the next two items for you. First item is for approving the bid number 212209 for the construction, reconstruction of 10th Street South. So this is a very large project. This is, I can't recall some of the final legacy projects. I think it's been on the long looks of the project. Obviously, they've been on the top. We're finally getting this, that construction. This is for 10th Street South, starting at Fifth Avenue South. We will probably be down to determine if that's 9th Street South. So that can be long. But this includes drainage work, also water sewer replacement work, soil, sewer, the other flat work, breaking off a little bit of the, uh, construction of that. Next one is the inside. So to give you an idea of what kind of work's going to be done, those are driveway aprons, entrances into properties, entrances into some of the residents, city properties on the west side of 10th, and then going all the way down to 9th Street, or 9th Avenue South. 9th Street South, sorry. So this project is complete. What we've got done is, like I said, the county formula was competitive bid. We did receive four responses. This is the lowest qualified bidder's response, as well as the construction admin services by Ways and Way for that overall project. There is some alternate in that for some replacement of a potential force main sewer and/or the effluent sewer line. We're not sure what the condition of those pipes are, but we'll evaluate those and determine whether or not we need to replace either of those before we obviously reconstruct the road on top of it.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. And a motion.
I'm going to reaward the bid number 212209 to United Brothers Development Corp. for the construction of 10th. Street South infrastructure improvements, phase one, and the amount not to exceed $7,423,066.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Ms. DeMong?
Thank you. So the residents in this area are all going to be notified and contacted. So how will we reach them to let them know we're ripping up their neighborhoods?
Well, this has all been communicated previously through public meetings earlier in the phases, long before I was here. But what we'll do is the next pieces will be, we're actually going to have one of our own resident inspectors to be involved in this from public works. They do a fantastic job of communicating with all the residents of what's going to be done to assure that everybody knows. There's a lot of parking issues here that will have to be addressed before we can begin construction, a lot of excess parking issues. But ideally, it's going to help repair all those issues, especially with the drainage that we have in this particular area. So we're going to be reaching out, plus we're going to work on trying to get this on the website as well, as we've done with the last few projects, to kind of let people know what's going on and what's going to go on in their areas.
Thanks. I think it was about three years ago, one of the businesses was having an issue with the parking with another business, and this is, because it's all in the right of way.
Correct.
So this is going to correct a lot of that.
We hope.
Okay, thank you.
I love the optimism. Mr. Mesa?
Same question that I asked Ashley earlier. The money, everything's accurate. The contractors and I can come back with, hey, sorry, this is the wrong amount. We have to charge more.
So the amounts that have been bid, have been vetted through the process, they are line items. So obviously, if we don't do particular items, we don't have to pay for those particular items. If we decide to make changes in the plans, we can get credits back to those. Again, that comes back the other direction, too. If we have required to do additional work, that goes the other direction. I think the highest bidder on this project was a little over $9 million, that was before contingencies. So we feel we have a very, very good contractor for this particular project. We do have a, the bid is higher than what we expected, but I think that's the market that we're seeing right now. People are having trouble with materials. People are having trouble with people, being able to get the work done. So that's reflecting in the bids that we're starting to see back.
Mr. Jansen?
You did say that those two valves have to be replaced as contingencies already.
We built in a contingency for replacing one. So one of those is an effluent line, which is the clean water leaving our wastewater plant. We don't really expect to have to have any maintenance on that because the acids and materials that are in the force main will cause the pipe to deteriorate. So we really believe that that pipe could potentially need to be replaced, probably not going to need to be the other one. If it does, we might even be able to slip line and be able to accommodate that. So we built in, a built-in alternate bid, and then we've actually got some contingency on top of that. So if the worst-case scenario, we have to replace them both, hopefully I won't have to come back and ask you for additional funding, but just be able to fund it with the alternate that's here and the contingency that we've allowed.
And if those valves have to be replaced, would be any length of time that we'd be in loss of service?
They'll require some pumping and bypassing on the force main to be able to, because this is the main force main that feeds into the wastewater treatment plant, because the wastewater treatment plant is on 10th. So obviously, we can't shut that off. So we would have to isolate it, pipe it all the way around to be able to continue operations of the wastewater plant. Same thing goes with the effluent. We would have to get permission from the EP to go out the back door for a hind period while we could replace that, because again, we can't shut that off. So both of those are extremely critical. They actually missed oversight through this entire project for lots of years, let's just say it that way. We caught it at the last minute and it was too late to actually have them designed to be replaced. We weren't for sure of the, actually, their condition. So we plan on couponing those, that's included in here. Then we'll be able to make the evaluation. Do we have thin pipe wall? Everything seem okay? If everything seems okay, we'll proceed ahead and we'll replace either one.
Thank you.
Mr. Stokes?
What is the, once we start construction, what's the estimated timeframe so that we can convey any, if we get any questions?
I think this one, again, is another 12-month timeframe. You know, how accurate that is, I know we're struggling with some of our projects to keep them on track right now. Some of that has been material delays. So we're trying to work the best we can with all of our contractors to be able to address those issues as best we can. So I hope it's a year. A lot of this is commercial area, but there is some residential, there is a school nearby. So we've got some other things that we have to deal with as well as how we're going to be able to do this to keep traffic flowing on 10th and being able to move around.
Any other questions from council? Madam Clerk, call. Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golden?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. And the second part of this item?
I'm going to review that we approved the agreement with Ways and Way for construction administration services, and the amount not to exceed $29,681.
Second, any questions or comments from council? Anything to add on this?
I do not. That's just the paperwork part of being able to process a project this size.
Seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, call. Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golden?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. Next up, item.
Okay, so my, my second item is a small item. It's for a sidewalk and driveway approach. If you'll flip to the next slide, Ms. Clerk. So what we have is we have this property at Levitt Avenue South that was involved right in the middle of the last reconstruction project. Because of the COVID delays and whatnot that happened over the last couple of years, that project got delayed. It should have been included as part of the previous reconstruction project, but because of their delays, they did not, and we closed out that project and moved on. They came in and asked if we would continue that sidewalk and help with getting that approach. We're back in for that four-unit building that's going back in now. So we had their bid estimate. We did two more additional bids and quotes, and we actually are, the agreement in front of you is actually reimbursed for the lowest of our three quotes, but this puts it back on the contractor to actually do the work so that they can do it as they replace the curb, to do some other work that they're required to do to get their occupancy for being able to allow people to move in.
Thank you. And a motion?
I'm going to approve the agreement with Harrison Development, number one LLC, for the cost share participation in the sidewalk installation and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the final agreement.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Ms. DeMong?
What's the timeline for, because if they want to move in, what's the timeline to get that sidewalk down so we can get the occupancy for them?
As fast as they can get it poured. That's why we're wanting to kind of remove ourselves from the process is because if we had to wait on them to actually do the curb and road repairs, and then we had to schedule to get in to do the approach, and then they have to come in to do the driveway pieces, it's going to delay that. They actually are trying to get occupancy before the end of this month. So if they can get the work completed before the end of this month, of course, this is paid as soon as the work is completed. So as soon as they complete the work to our satisfaction, meet what we need, we'll issue the check so they can move on.
Okay, so it's going to be like the first annual list?
It's, well, it's their contractor. That's kind of why we're looking back away. It's not our contractor, so we don't have to try to manage it. It's on them to try to get the work done as fast as they, however they want to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Please make sure you remind the builder to do the proper thickness of concrete because there's going to be traffic on it, so.
Yep, and we'll do inspections on that to make sure they do what they're supposed to do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, call. Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golden?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. So this, we'll skip to the resolutions right now and move with some degree of haste through those so we can get back up to J and K, and we'll start with resolution A. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. We're asking for council's approval of this agreement, which will give the City of Jacksonville authority to distribute all the funds to the beach cities, including City of Baltimore. This is necessary.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution by title?
A resolution of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Jacksonville, the City of Atlantic Beach, the City of Jacksonville Beach, the City of Neptune Beach, and the Town of Baldwin for distribution opioid litigation settlement proceeds, provided for adoption of recitals, repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions and council decisions, severability and an effective date.
Thank you. And a motion?
I'm going to read, we adopt resolution 21152022 approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Jacksonville, the City of Jacksonville Beach, the City of Atlantic Beach, the City of Neptune Beach, and the Town of Baldwin for a distribution of opioid litigation settlement proceeds.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golden?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Motion carries. Resolution B. I think that is, Ms. Allen.
Good evening again. Heather Ireland, planning and development director. I know you guys heard about this a couple of weeks ago, but I'll refresh your memory. Resolution 201622, sorry, 211622 is to adopt the updated South End Area Redevelopment Plan. The plan was originally adopted in 1987 and was updated in 2011 with a capital improvements plan. It had not been looked at since. And as stated in the memo, several of the projects have either been completed or outdated or the technology has changed in such a way that the CRA can no longer fund them. So the CRA had several discussions on outstanding projects in addition to a public works report that identified some additional drainage and street improvements that were needed. So what we're asking you to do today is to adopt the amended plan. The CRA reviewed and adopted this at the end of July via resolution, and I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions that you have from the briefing.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution by title?
A resolution of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, to amend the community redevelopment plan for the South End redevelopment area for the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, as previously amended according to the requirements of the Community Redevelopment Act of 1969, by adopting the fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital improvement plan as presented in Exhibit A attached here to and made a part thereof, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions and council decisions, severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And a motion?
Sorry. I'm here that we adopt Resolution 2116-2022 adopting the updated south end redevelopment area plan.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember DuMont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Motion carries. Do you want to do a staff presentation?
Our ordinance A. Thank you, Mayor. Switch my papers over. I have some slides. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind going to the first slide, just help me kind of explain the project. So staff received an application for a redevelopment district or RD rezoning for the property that's up on the screen that is bound by First Street North, Second Street North, Fifth Avenue North, and Fourth Avenue North. The reason for the RD rezoning is the property owner and developers looking at a phased project with some creative solutions to providing parking for the entire project. And I'll just kind of go over that briefly with you. The agent for the applicant is here for any questions. And I'll talk a little bit about some of our discussions that I had with you all, several of you, and also the agent when I get to that part. Can you go to the next slide, please? There, thank you. So as I mentioned, this is a phased redevelopment project where Phase One is already complete. That is actually the Oku Sushi property in the existing Jay Johnson Gallery that's being used for offices. Phase Two of this project would redevelop the vacant property that sits currently between Lynch's and Beef Pizza and provide parking for those uses. Phase Three would have a building in conjunction with the parking on the vacant portion of the block that is on the northwest corner. And Phase Four of the project would reimagine the gallery space from office to restaurant uses and provide some additional office and retail space just to the north where that parking is. The application was reviewed and considered by both the CRA for consistency with the downtown CRA district plan and also the Planning Commission. Both recommended approval. And I will provide some conditions of approval for you, just for everyone's benefit. The CRA's condition was to ensure that each phase of the development is reviewed to ensure consistency with the downtown CRA plan, which is something that staff does by policy anyway. We want to make sure we memorialize that in here. And the Planning Commission proposed a condition that Phases Three and Four, as it relates to bars and restaurants, that any, and outdoor seating, that any ingress or egress orientation be oriented to the north-south. And if it is facing west, would require conditional use of approval. One thing I do want to discuss with you, and I've spoken to several of you about this either last week or today, one of the things that really differs in this particular RD rezoning as it compares to CBD zoning district is that the applicant put in there that they wanted to have bars as a permitted use as opposed to a conditional use, as it is allowed throughout the rest of the city. Again, I spoke to several of you about it, and I've spoken to the agent for the property owner and developer. And they're proposing that restaurants remain in permitted use, but then drinking establishments be moved to conditional use. So they're offering that up in addition to they are comfortable with the Planning Commission's recommendation in regards to the orientation of some of the outdoor seating and bars, that anything facing westward Second Street would essentially require conditional use approval. And you guys probably have a lot of questions about this, so be happy to field those. And again, the agent for the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ireland. We'll go ahead and start working through the hearing text. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida establishing a redevelopment district, RD zoning district within the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, as provided under Chapter 34 of the Code Ordinances of said city, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. This ordinance is for the redevelopment district RD rezoning of a property is before this council for a public hearing and consideration on its first reading. Under the laws of the State of Florida, an application to amend the zoning regulations or map governing a property is handled as a quasi-judicial proceeding. A quasi-judicial proceeding means that a governing body is now functioning in a manner similar to a court with a mayor and council sitting as impartial decision makers, hearing testimony and questioning presenters who are to provide substantial and competent evidence to support their side of the issue. It is the duty of the council to arrive at sound decisions regarding the use of the property within the city. This involves receiving citizen input regarding the proposed use on the neighborhood, especially where the input is fact-based and not a simple expression of opinion. It is the applicant's burden to demonstrate that his or her application is consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. If the applicant is successful in showing consistency, then it is up to the local government to produce competent, substantial evidence of record that the application should be denied. The council's decision on RD rezoning application is based on the criteria set forth in Section 34-347(c)(3i) of the Land Development Code. Each member of the council has been provided a copy of the criteria. In addition, the council has received a copy of the application and the staff, Planning Commission, and Community Development Agency recommendations on this rezoning request. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2022-8178. Would the applicant's spokesperson like to say a few words? Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Steve Devenel, One and Fifty Drive, Suite 1200. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Joe Kronk, who's the project architect, as well as Caitlin Taylor, who's the owner's representative. Ms. Ireland did a great job summarizing the project. And out of deference for the rest of your agenda tonight, I'm going to be extremely brief. If you wouldn't mind just going to the one site plan that shows the parking space beyond exactly. The only thing I want to point out here, Oku obviously is the lower right-hand corner. Phase Two would be a new restaurant between Beef Pizza and Lynch's. And in the upper left-hand corner, we've called out the Sea Chasers a lot just because they were the former owners. That shows parking on the ground floor. There would be a building, an L-shaped building, that you can kind of see with the dotted lines that goes, again, from sort of the northeast corner to the west and then down to the southwest corner. That building, if we're able to find other parking solutions in the area, that building would be at grade. And it would, the parking spaces there would be dramatically reduced. However, if we're not able to be off-grade, then those parking spaces would be below, would be below the building. And that is what we call Phase Three. Phase Four, again, is the existing building where you see in the dot, the dots where it says Courtyard around it, that's where we currently have 18 parking spaces. Those 18 parking spaces would go away, and the building will be reconfigured from office to restaurant on the ground floor. The property owner that owns all this property actually has his office on the second and third floors, and those would remain unchanged. The uses Heather described are exactly right. The one comment that we had at Planning Commission and then also Councilman Jansen called me about this last week was concern regarding the bar use. Right now, there are no licenses available in Jacksonville Beach, but we wrote that in, that use in because we thought it was appropriate with the mixed-use nature of this block. But out of the concerns that we've heard from residents and Mr. Jansen, we moved bars from being a permitted use to a conditional use. So if we asked for bar use anywhere within this development, that would require us to come back and seek the approval of a conditional use application. Now, and I want to be clear, the bar is a standalone bar. So there, restaurants will be permitted, restaurants have bars in them. But if there's a standalone bar or standalone wine bar, for example, those would require additional approvals and notice, and everyone in the neighborhood would be notified for additional public hearings. But other than that, the conditions, we drafted some language very specific to address the Planning Commission language as well as the CRA condition. And we provided that to Ms. Ireland. We're prepared to go over that in detail if you want tonight or for purposes tonight. We'll represent that we're in agreement with their conditions that they represented. We can clean up the language, you know, between this meeting and the next one. In the meantime, we're available to answer any questions you may have about the application and the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devenel. Next, we'll open the hearing for testimony from other interested parties. I do not have any speaker cards on this, but if anyone would like to speak in favor of the application, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, if anyone would like to speak in opposition to the application, you can approach the podium.
Mayor, I was wondering, Nicola, the owner of Lynch's, I was wondering if she would like to speak. No?
Okay. I've never known Nicola to be shy about speaking up if she has something to say. But thank you, Mr. Mesa. So no one in opposition to the application? Anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the application? City attorney or director of planning and development, you wish to respond to any of the comments, which there weren't, but... And then applicant, if you wish to respond to anything, but there wasn't anything. So a closed闭会 hearing. Now, we will announce ex parte communications before requesting a motion on this ordinance, beginning with myself. Each of the members is requested to indicate for the record both the names of the persons and the substance of any ex parte communications regarding this application. An ex parte communication refers to any meeting or discussion with a person or citizen who may have an interest in this decision which occurred outside of the public hearing process. I'll begin. I had breakfast with Mr. Devenel last week, Tuesday. We discussed essentially what he went over here, as well as several other projects that he's working on within the city. And Mr. Stokes?
Yeah. David Smith contacted me regarding the permitted and conditional use. I believe he also sent an email in as well. And then I had spoken to Mr. Devenel a week or two ago regarding this plan as well, addressing any questions and concerns. And that's, that's it.
Like everybody else, I don't feel special anymore. I spoke to Mr. Devenel, I had breakfast at it, had coffee. And David Smith, Mr. Devenel went over this project as well as other projects. And Mr. Smith's concerns were the liberal licenses and some proximity issues.
Likewise, I did have coffee with him a few weeks ago. We talked about this and other projects he has. David Smith also contacted me, just like he contacted everyone, and said the same thing. Chen, you guys have talked about it.
And thank you. I forgot to mention the email from Mr. Smith, which other ladies are addressed. Mr. Smith?
I'll continue to address David Smith's email. Glad to see. And I did, I spoke with Mr. Devenel about this project a while back and potentially what can go on.
Yeah, I'm carrying on the mantra here. So yeah, just because Mr. Devenel indicated last week about the bars, taverns, nightclubs, liquor, is that issue. And I have had a conversation with David Smith as well.
I had a meeting with Mr. Devenel to go over high-level overview of this project as well as some other projects. And then also had a call with Mr. Smith to discuss the bars, lounges, and nightclubs being permitted uses and his concerns and issues with that.
Thank you. Can we get a motion?
I'm here that we approve ordinance number 2022-8178 for a redevelopment district RD rezoning application for the Gallery at Jacksonville Beach project on the first reading and scheduled a second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022.
Second, before opening the floor for discussion or questions by the council, please be reminded that our decision will be based on the criteria set forth in the Land Development Code, and the council is required to approve a clear statement of specific findings of fact stating the basis upon which such facts were determined and the decision was made. I'll open the floor now for discussion by council members. And just for the benefit of everyone in the audience, if you haven't been through one of these before, this is the first discussion. And we will be addressing this again at our first meeting in September. I kind of paid attention to when the lights popped on. I know Ms. DuMont was first.
Thank you. First, I want to address one of Mr. Smith's concerns about there not being a report from the CRA. That report is the staff report that is presented, and it's in the packet. So I wanted to make sure that the process was followed correctly. I agree with the conditions the CRA wanted on there, the Planning Commission wanted on there, as well as the switching the bars, lounges, nightclubs, taverns, and other drinking places to a conditional use instead of a permitted use. So I would make a motion that we, and this is, do you want to do all the motions at the same time? The one from each one of the agencies and that one? Or do you want to do them separately?
Let's do them all together and see how that goes.
Okay. So I make a motion that the, that this be amended to note that each phase will be reviewed by staff to ensure continued compliance with the downtown CRA plan. That is the CRA condition. The second condition from the Planning Commission that in Phases Three and Four, as it relates to bar and restaurant development, any primary ingress or egress orientation, as well as outdoor seating, will be oriented to the north or south. And any variation to that facing west would require conditional use. And then the third one, to move bars, lounges, nightclubs, taverns, and other drinking establishments from a permitted use to a conditional use, leaving restaurants as a permitted use.
Second, we have a motion and a second to amend the motion. Is there any discussion specifically to this amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Mesa?
Question, Ms. DuMont. I know you said north or south for conditional use. I'm assuming Second Street, obviously conditional use because it would be facing residential units, correct?
Correct.
Now, freedom north, now we're talking about the parking lot, or are we talking about the little, the empty lot between Lynch's and these?
Oh, it won't be empty. And the, the, what the Planning Commission was concerned about was the condos just to the west of this property not going to the north or the south because they don't have their residential uses. Other than that, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, that's.
Please.
Okay.
Any other questions on the amendment?
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Again, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure that, I didn't hear the condition permit outdoor dining as a part of the restaurant use. So I would just ask that that be, that is, that is modified by the description that Councilwoman DuMont made regarding it facing to the west. But I just want to make sure that in general, outdoor dining was permitted with the restaurant use. And that was my only question. And she's nodding, so I take that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just struck the list of the things you don't want there and moved it down outdoor state in the language.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments on the amendment? Madam Clerk, roll call on just the amendment. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DuMont?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. Motion carries. Back to the original motion as amended. Mr. Nichols?
I said a couple questions about, obviously, a little concerned about that area. But the parking in the parking lot, wouldn't be determined if it's going to be a building at grade or a parking lot. Because my big concern is noise from a parking lot late at night, seeing that I live right there.
Well, the, the decision about whether or not the building in Phase Two will be at grade or elevated will really be determined by what other parking resources are developed in the area. So the CRA has had ongoing conversations, as many of you know, about looking for alternative parking solutions. If one of those is chosen to be implemented in this vicinity, then what we will do is we'll seek dinner into some type of arrangement with the city to either lease spaces or buy spaces or something along those lines so that instead of having, you know, parking on the ground floor, you'd have a building there. But, but that, again, that is why we've done this in phases with a little flexibility so that we can react to whatever happens in the market. The other thing, the other reason why this is being done in phases is because we want to have the ability to move from, it may not move Phase One, Two, Three, Four. It may move Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Four, Phase Three. But it gives us, again, the flexibility to react to the market. For example, when Oku opened, we immediately got dozens of calls from extremely well-known regional restaurateurs who wanted to have restaurant inventory in this vicinity. And so we are trying to react to that. But one of the things that's important for that is parking. So getting back to your question, the flexibility on parking in this RD really allows us to be able to react to the market. And it will be determined by what the CRA decides to do in this area.
Yeah, it's always kind of a depression. We're going to get more of a courtyard kind of area in that, in the parking area, similar to Neptune, similar to Neptune Beach. So, you know, if we can solve the parking other place, I'd like to try to get some room space in there and, you know, a fountain or something, something else.
So if, so yes, we have drawings, I'll have a good, we have drawings for them. But basically, you see where the little circle is in the kind of the left-hand side. Just up to the right, there's two handicap parking spaces?
Yes.
And then two arrows right above that. That whole area, yeah, right there, would all be courtyard and green with the building at grade because there's no way to, to get back there with cars if we go that grade. So that, that would be our ultimate goal, to have that be a courtyard. And, and again, we're, it's hard to see in this plan, but we're on Phase Four. The Jay Johnson Gallery would have a pathway really cut through the middle of it that would open it up so that you could walk through almost a breezeway into a courtyard with a restaurant on the right, a restaurant on the left, and then offices above. But again, that, that really requires... But again, that, that really requires a bunch of dominance to fall in the right order. But the hope here was we wouldn't have to come back on every change and we'd be able to plan for lots of different permutations of the facts.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. I like the idea and hopefully we'll get there.
Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to make a few comments and follow up to our amendment that we made. I do want to thank Mr. Devenau and the developer for agreeing to and being so agreeable about moving the bars and rest, the bars and lounges and nightclub to conditional use because I think all of us have heard very loud and clear that, that our citizens feel like we have enough bars in the downtown area. And I realize going forward in the future, I know that we don't have any available licenses right now, but in the future there could be. And so I think it's important that this is a conditional use so that, so that depending on what the, what the situation is like at the time, there will be some public involvement in what happens there. So I do appreciate your cooperation on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jansen?
Uh, just, this may sound a little silly, but I was going to, since we've labeled these phase ones before and you mentioned that you may not go in order, I would hate to see people get twisted around the axle if you went to phase, then everybody said, what happened to phase two? I don't know if your inability or something taken into consideration.
Thank you. Well, it's, I think it's clear in the, in the way that we've written the narrative. Phase one, as we mentioned, is already done. Phase two will immediately begin upon approval of this rezoning if that takes place. And, yeah, we hope you're clarity on three and four. I always like to do it in order as well. That's why I think it's going to go three and four. But it's written in a way that it can go out of sequence.
Thank you.
Mr. Mesa?
Uh, question to Ms. Ireland, and I don't know if this is a dumb question, long day. Obviously, approve or disapprove of this rezoning, is this the entire block right? Just, um...
Not quite. I would say the majority of the block. Madam Clerk, can you go to the aerial, please? Thank you. It does not include the northeast corner where the beef pizza and flask a hand, and there's some other small buildings there. And it does not include liches, but it includes the rest of the block. So OCU, the former gallery, and then all the vacant property. And Mr. Smith's property. It does not include Mr. Smith's property, goes around that, yeah.
And just a question, is there a reason why or was just?
That, that is what the applicant and the developer owns, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, and by the way, I'm just happy something's being done with this lot because it's been empty since I moved here almost 20 years ago. So I'm just happy that something's moving forward and it's in progress.
Thank you. We're excited as well. And just for the record, so everyone knows, I also spoke with Mr. Smith today and we exchanged information and I'll be sending him the condition that he drafted as well as the staff reports he wasn't aware that they had been written. He was also concerned about whether you received notice. And I spoke to Ms. Ireland today and she assured me that the city followed all the notice procedures. So we had a very good dialogue and I'm sure we'll talk again in the next two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Devenau. Any other questions from council? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DuMont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. We're going to go back to item J and K. I think there's probably some staff and others that they want to leave really quick. So everybody check the phone, take a moment, stretch, breathe, shake your thumbs off. You can stretch, good. We all got tissues in here? Everyone, take a seat. There should be plenty of seats now if you'd like to take one. I realize this is an emotionally charged issue and we have a lot of people in the room. I'm going to implore upon you to be courteous to everyone in the room, especially during public comment. I will read the public comment rules or guidelines when we get there. But we have media in the room, we have council members, we have citizens, we have neighbors, we have friends. I'm going to ask that you not cheer or applaud, not boo, not make any sort of outbursts. And I reserve the right to clear the room and call a recess until we can maintain the decorum that we should have and the respect that we should have for each other. So starting with item J, I'm going to ask Mr. Cliff Shepherd, who's our outside counsel, to give us staff opinion.
Yes, Mayor, counsel with item one. Is this turned on? Can y'all hear you okay? Um, it's, it's shown as item J and agrees as follows, approve, disapprove authorization to send formal notice to the American Red Cross for the reversion of the subject parcels to the city of Jacksonville Beach. I wanted to start there because I wanted to make sure everybody in, in the council, on the council and the symbol of folks understand what this is and what it isn't. Whatever we do tonight will not affect the reverter one way or the other. That is happened by operation of law, as I will explain in a minute. What this is about is notifying the Red Cross that we believe that by operation of law, we own the property, but if they have material personal items and so forth, they'd like to claim that they can go through the city manager arrange to pick that up. We don't want to keep that from them. So that's what this is about. No decision you make tonight could affect the reverter. It's not going to make it happen, it's not going to make it not happen. And again, that's because of the way this operates by law. Based on the facts that were provided to us, the last guard station automatically reverted to the city around 2014. We had to do some research to try to put that all together. And so I wanted to familiarize the council with the fact of where the reverter language comes from. The properties that make up the lighthouse station in 366 began being deeded from the city to the Red Cross starting in 1921. More property was deeded in 1946 and then most recently in 2007. All of those deeds are recorded in the public records and all of them have very similar reverter language. And so rather than read it from all three, I'll read it from the most recent because it's a little bit more modern, but it's still got the same, same basic stuff. It says that said land shall be solely for the purpose of the northeast Florida chapter of the American Red Cross in their life-saving work and upon the discontinuance of the use thereof for said purpose for the period of one year or upon the use of said land for any other purpose or purposes except those specifically set forth above. Then and any of said events, the title to the aforesaid land shall ipso facto revert to the city of Jacksonville Beach or its successors and all right, title and interest of the said grantees shall thereupon cease, determine, and become null and void. Now, in all of that talk, the words ipso facto stand out. What does that mean? That is Latin and it means by the very fact or act, meaning that if a certain fact or act occurs, then the consequences of that act are automatic. And in this case, is the ceasing of the Red Cross to provide the services that are required by the deeds for longer than a period of a year. So it is our belief, based on the facts that we were provided, that the city's ownership of that building has been that way since probably around 2015. And it's hard to be sure, but somewhere in that, certainly not something that happened yesterday. So the question becomes, what would we do in that circumstance? Since this has been a question in the community, who's the owner, you know, as we'll talk about later, there's a referendum about all of that. But we think the appropriate thing to do, at least from a, being a good, good steward of, of our relationship, particularly with the Red Cross, would be to let the Red Cross know that this is our view and to get them to, through Mr. Spepolos, reach out if they would like to reclaim any of their personal items, goods, or whatever. And that would be done by the form of a letter. It's not, we're not authorizing legal action here. I cannot tell you that legal action will come. I would bet on it. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. It's just to let the Red Cross know where we stand.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go through speaker cards before we make a motion. Have a listen to the statement on this. And bear with me, since we have two similar, or not necessarily similar, but two items around the same topic. Some of you indicated one or the other, some of you indicated both. So when I call your name, if you want to come and speak on J, you can. If you'd like to wait and speak in relation to K, just wave again and we'll, we'll do that. But first, to the, the good friends who would like to let us know what they think but aren't going to take time to come up and speak, but we'll let you know, Bandy Warford is opposed to item J. Um, oh, we have two for Bandy, thank you. That's okay. Okay, so that was the, and then Rita Mears would like to speak on J only, or this card is for J only. Ms. Mears, if you want to approach the podium and give us your name and address, so give me a minute, sir, as the council.
Rita Mears, 50 North North Street, Jacksonville, Florida. And I did call hard for both J and K.
I, I got it.
Okay, great. So I'd like to come back up on that. So I'd like to respond to a couple of things that Mr. Shepherd stated. He is stating that by operation of law, this land, these three parcels are reverting to the city's ownership. And that is not a correct statement. So I would, I would say that it would be in your best interest not to approve, you know, sending that letter to the American Red Cross because that's not a correct statement. And he says ipso facto is by the very fact or act. There's been no act. I know that we're trying to pull an act from approximately eight years ago, that there's been some separation between the LSC and ARC, but we all know the truth of the matter is they have been connected at the hip for over a century. And that while they may, you know, be separate entities, they have been working alongside one another. So this is an absolute example of government overreach when you are eight years later trying to find a reason that's never been brought up until now as to why you don't or you own that building. And so I think that it's not appropriate, it's in the letter, because I don't think it's a correct statement of law. I think there's only a couple of reasons that this could be happening. One is that the city is attempting to strong-arm the American Red Cross, which is a sad statement. I mean, it's sad when you're strong-arming volunteer lifeguards, but I think it's even sadder when you're strong-arming the American Red Cross. It gets these unilateral decisions being made by the city. We know we have legal agreements, we know we have legal instruments, we know we have deeds, but forget about the court. Forget about the court weighing in on this. We're going to come, we're going to put a lock on a building. We're going to send you a letter and say, come and get your things. That's how the city's now doing business and that is very scary. Not listening to their citizens, not listening to their constituents, and then you're, you're taking the American Red Cross by surprise. We've had multiple, the LSC has had multiple conversations with ARC. They may now know because of all the recent correspondence, but I'm going to, you know, go out on a limb and say that they have not thought for the past eight years that they did not own that building. And this is just reaching really, really low. And so I would encourage you, do not make a bad situation worse. This operation of law, there's no reason for this to be done now. I mean, you have to look at the timing of it. It, it's an effort for city staff to kind of use this forum to support what their agenda is, and that's inappropriate. That's wholly inappropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Mears. I'll go through the people who said J and K, if you'd like to speak on this item or wait until K, just, I mean, I want to call your name. Philip Edens?
Certainly. Philip Edens, 1893 Osprey Block, Blue Ford. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. The first meeting that you entertained us to address things about the floor, you all sat stoically and patiently and listened to over 73 people speak. The only thing that seemed to elicit a response is when one of our members talked about his great-grandmother actually lived in the house that's part of the historic buildings here. And that was very interesting. In our second meeting, over 53 people spoke. Again, you sat very stoically, respectfully, and listened to what everybody had to say. But before the comment period, before anything started, Mayor, you, you made the statement that I want to quell to any rumors that are here, that we were about trying to get control of the lifeguard station. But yet, here we are today. I would urge you to dismiss or disapprove this authorization to send a formal request to the Red Cross. Your basis is flawed. I would urge you to dismiss or disapprove this authorization to send a formal request to the Red Cross. Your basis is flawed. It's legally flawed, it can be proved to be legally flawed, and it's sort of like claiming a property. If you go back and read the documents, not everything that the good council has presented, like you said, you only had to deal with what was presented to you. Not everything is factual. So, on this item, I would certainly urge you to disapprove the item being forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edens. Christopher Sackell. Next, would you like to speak on K?
Yep.
Jason Gabriel.
Good evening. Jason Gabriel, with the law firm of Brewer Foreman, 50 North Florist Street, Suite 3000, here on behalf of the Volunteer Life Saving Court. As Ms. Mears, one of my partners stated, this isn't used to us. We reject the notion that any automatic reversion has happened. I like to see what title company out there would even ensure title of this sort with this notion that it just, by operation of law, automatically reverted back to the city, let alone eight years ago. And I would point out that in your memo from the city manager, it states that the city has determined that the three parcels, by operation of law, have already reverted to the city's ownership. So, again, used to us that a determination has been made, I submit, I know you're not going to answer questions here today that I pose, but whether it was an official determination or an unofficial determination, or an opinion or an interpretation by your council, whatever that might be, we are just today, just a few hours ago, being notified that there is such a determination, and we haven't been privy to any of that information before. And if that is the case, I'm asking here orally, and I will do so in writing tomorrow, for a public records request for all documents, correspondence, communications, records, and anything that led up to and confirmed this determination that ipso facto this property has purportedly been reverted back to the city of Jacksonville Beach. Again, we reject the notion that any automatic reversion has occurred. And we'll save the rest of our commentary for the next item on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Thomas Cacerro.
Oppose J, I'll wait until K.
Mary Phillips supports K, opposes J, but doesn't wish to speak.
Yes, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Can I speak on both?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll speak on J now and K later?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mary Phillips, I live at 934 10th Street North in Jacksonville Beach. I'm a citizen of the city, but I am not a member of the DLSC. I am speaking tonight with regard to both items, but I'll just limit my comments right now to item J. I believe it should be disapproved by allowing the Volunteer Life Saving Court to continue to provide services and use a lifeguard station. You accepted the terms of the legal agreement. It appears that the legal agreement identifies a 12-month period of non-service before any action can be taken. Any movement on this agenda item should wait until the term of that agreement has been met or the citizens have voted on the proposed ballot initiative. I think voting to send a letter to the American Red Cross is premature, and this item J should be disapproved.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Neil Howell filled out a speaker card. He is in support of K subsection A and is opposed to J and then KB. William White is the same. And Trent Aldorf has the same position. Okay, let's see. Sorry, going through a pause here. Timothy Klein does not wish to address the council, but is in support of K subsection A and in opposition to J and K subsection B. Jared Newell, same position, supports K alpha and J and K bravo. Jason Caffey, looks like C-A-F-F-E-Y, does not wish to speak, but is supportive of J and KB. J and KB and then J, yeah. I think it's the same. Mr. Caffey, am I interpreting that you have the same position as the other cards?
Disapprove of J.
Disapprove of J, thank you. Ross Giato, same position. Zachary Watson, same position. Matt Duffy, same position. And Dylan Bieber, same position. So, those wished not to speak. And then we have Guy Bond does not wish to address the council, but is opposed to agenda item J and K, as is Riva Bond. And then we'll get to, okay. Angie Brat, who does not wish to address the council, but is in support of the agenda item. Courtney Proctor. I think we're talking about agenda item K, Angie. And then Courtney Proctor does not wish to address the council, but is in support of agenda item K. And Courtney is in support of agenda item J. And then Jim Emery.
Jim Emery, 1764 Motel Towne at Land Beach. We object totally to the sending of a letter to the Red Cross. As your counsel, outside counsel stated, he was giving his legal opinion based on the facts that were given to him. So, it sounds like he was not told that we've acted as authorized agents and providers of service for the Red Cross as volunteers of the Red Cross since 2014. So, as was previously stated by a couple of people, the reverter clause has not been triggered. It will be triggered officially if you continue to lock us out on April 5th of 2023, because up until April 4th, the day before we were illegally locked out of our station, we were providing no services at that station for the Red Cross as authorized agents and volunteers of the Red Cross. So, again, we reject this proposal. And also, several of the people you read out that you said were approved of J are all members of the Volunteer Life Saving Court, and I guarantee you, they read it backwards. And you can, if you want the listed names that you read, I can tell you right now, they all rejected it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the clarification. And if I misspoke, if anybody doesn't agree with Mr. Emery's classification of their statements, please let me know. I do apologize for that. There's a lot of paradoxicalness going on here that I'm just trying to sort through to give everybody a chance to express their opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. And Mr. Emery, would you like to come back under K?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all the speaker cards, specific to everybody who wanted to speak on J. Let's go ahead and get a motion.
I move that we approve authorization to send formal notice to the American Red Cross for the reversion of the subject parcels to the city of Jacksonville Beach.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Dumont.
Thank you. I respect what everybody has been saying here, and there is obviously a disagreement on what is happening here. And the disagreement is really stemming from when the Red Cross separated itself from the DLSC in 2013, 2014. I would, and we need clarification on that, because that's a really big piece. And the only way that we get clarification on that is through the courts, as your lawyer has stated. And the way to get this through the courts is to send this letter and get the motion started. Without that, it's going to be a back and forth of, well, are they part of it? Are they not part of it? And I don't think that that is helping anyone, because that distinction of the relationship between the DLSC and the American Red Cross is, it's really what's defining a lot of this. So, I am going to approve this, because we need to, we need that relationship defined. We need that relationship defined in the court of law, so we can then move forward. We, all of us together.
Thank you. Ms. Dumont, any other council questions, comments? Mr. Shouse.
Yeah, well, is it appropriate for Cliff to further highlight any of the points made?
Yes.
Cliff?
I wrote down what I believe were the legal points, and those came primarily from Ms. Mears. She said she disagrees with the automatic reverter language. Okay. And that's an incorrect, correct statement of law. And again, okay. And that it's strong-armed the Red Cross. Now, that one, I got my attention on, because it's just not accurate. Again, so it's clear, we're letting the Red Cross know that if they wish to claim some stuff that they may have still in the station, they can do it. That's what this does. And so, whether Ms. Mears is right, or whether I'm right, it is accurate. It's based on facts that were presented to me, but I don't have any contrary facts. But ultimately, that's what the play, I'll, but it appears to me, based on the information provided, that there's no authorized agent exception to this reverter language. It basically says, if the Red Cross doesn't provide these services, the property reverts. And we did do research, trying to check into that beforehand, because we don't want to go up here blind. We're not trying to leave anybody downwind, or Stokes, or any in the community. That's not the role of an outside counsel. That's not, as you know, I came here as a charter review lawyer, not to get involved in politics and fighting over lifeguard station. I have no motivation, except to give you the best information I can. And if I get additional information to consider, you can let off and consider.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Shouse?
Yeah, so to Ms. Dumont's point, to keep the issue out of the courts, but allow our attorney, both inside and outside, to collect more information based on the relationship between the American Red Cross and the DLSC and the reverter clause, I would like to make a motion to defer until set point that Mr. Shepherd and Ms. Robinson collect sufficient information regarding the relationship between the American Red Cross, the DLSC, and the reverter clause.
There's a motion to amend, is there a second? Motion dies. Back to the original motion is forward.
Mr. Shepherd, do you, I believe that Mr. Emery stated that the DLSC has acted as authorized agents of the American Red Cross.
Yes.
Do we have any documentation that shows that?
What I think, and I don't know if this is accurate, but what I think may be referred to, and again, I could be dead wrong here, is that they have folks that are trained by the Red Cross. Like, I got a swimming bag just when I was a kid, when they were integrating it began and all that stuff. I assume that there's some sort of a program, or at least there was, I don't know if there still is, by which they can, the Red Cross can say, you know, you now have life-saving training. I don't know that. But that's different than what we're talking about here, because the deeds operate in such a way that it says, "The Red Cross stops providing services." And based on the information presented, it appears, really without dispute, that the Red Cross stopped providing services.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols.
I want to believe that this is going to end up in court one way or another. If it goes, whichever way it goes, and this has torn this community apart, it has been really just devastating for so many people in this community, that I want to see it resolved as quickly as possible in this method by the city to go ahead and notify, to allow us to, for whoever's going to sue, can sue if the Red Cross wants to, or whoever will allow us to resolve this issue sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Any other comments from council? All right, on the issue of item J, Madam Thorpe will call.
Councilmember Liza?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunham?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item J, Mr. Shepherd, if you'd like to give us a report?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Sorry, item K.
Yeah, item K. So, before I get into this, I want to explain that this is a decision that you need to, this is not something that can be delegated to staff. And it might have been some consideration previously, that maybe the staff can just take this and ball it on, but it really cannot happen that way. So, the question that's before you is whether or not the ballot petition circulated and received, according to the supervisor of elections at Vival County, enough signatures to be put on the ballot, whether the ministerial duty took place, the referendum on the ballot, requires you to do that. But we have researched it, and we've looked at the petition and the language of the summary and the title and the actual amendment, and we believe the petition itself is unlawful. And the limitation, the very limited limitation on your ministry, your responsibility, is when the subject of the petition on its face has unlawful language or asks that the government do unlawful things. If the substance of the amendment itself are legally infirm, the city may choose not to advance the referendum to the ballot box. Ultimately, this is your call. I'm not trying to tell you what to do. We have a recommendation, but that is up to you at the end of the day. Here, in this case, there are several problems that appear on the face of the petition. And the amendment itself, which your legal team, that includes myself, Ms. Robinson, and some outside councils we consulted, I'll talk about them in a minute, believes you can consider and determine whether to advance this referendum to the voters. While these issues do not represent every problem we have identified, because there were quite a few, they do represent issues we think are important, and we place these issues in three categories. So, the first category is the unconstitutional preemptive or in violation of Charter of state statute. And simply put, this boils down to, you cannot do through a citizen petition that was the city itself could not do through you all sitting here as elected officials. Now, I think I should be able to get a slide up here, if I do this right. Okay. So, this is the petition we're talking about. And the first problem that we identified under this section is that the amendment would require the city to deed the public property for a private purpose. And that refers to the section of the amendment that requires the city to deed over all of its interests, whatever those interests may be, to the Red Cross. And notably, it does so without restriction on what the Red Cross can do with that station. It could literally, as written today, be sold to a developer or some other use. There's no restriction in the language that we're going to get to that in a minute. The amendment would also violate the provisions of Section 163.383A. That is the redevelopment statute. And why is that important? It is important because this lifeguard station, which has literally been here since I was a little boy, long before that, sits in our community redevelopment area. That gives it special status. And it means that in order to dispose of it or any interest in it, you must first go through a notice process, allow private development to bid essentially, and provide proposals for what they would do with that space after 30 days. And then you all decide which is in the best interest of furthering your redevelopment plan and redevelopment desires for the city. I believe this was overlooked by the folks who put together the petition, and understandably so, but it is what it is, and there's no question that that lifeguard station sits squarely within the boundaries of the CRA. I have the statute, the language of which is very clear, and I want to make that clear to you now. Three A reads as follows. Prior to disposition of any real property or interest therein in a community redevelopment area, any county, municipality, or community redevelopment agency shall give public notice of such disposition by publication in a newspaper, having a general circulation in the community at least 30 days prior to the execution of any contract to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer real property, and prior to the delivery of any instrument of conveyance with respect thereto, under the provisions of this section, invite proposals from and make all pertinent information available to private redevelopers or any persons interested in undertaking to redevelop or rehabilitate a community- a community redevelopment area or any part thereof. If you recall what I said initially, you cannot do through citizen referendum what you could not do as city council. You clearly could not dispose of an interest in this property without going through that notice process. And that, we believe, makes this provision infirm. The amendment also would require the city to violate its own competitive procurement requirements, which I do not believe is a legal mechanism that can be achieved through referendum that can't be achieved by the members of council itself. Now, the second category of problems is that the ballot title and summary are misleading. The ballot sum title contains vague terms. By vague, I'm not talking about what we know based on the fact that we've lived here a long time or may have some civic experience. I'm talking about what the voter sees when the voter goes into the 15-word title and the 75-word summary. And all the terms in there have to be understood and not vague and be able to be understood and not misleading. In the title, they use an acronym or they just give you the initials, J B O R. They say alongside J B O R. And then they say, "From American Red Cross Lifeguard Station." None of these terms is defined in a way that the person who's only going to see in the book, the title and the summary, what those things are. I'm not trying to play silly. I know, I understand what they are, but that doesn't beat the standard, we believe. It also contains within the summary what we would term, in the case of all, talks about impermissible political rhetoric. And in that regard... Should I change? Okay, here we go. In that regard, it says that, I think it went past, it's where the summary is. It says, here it says, "The working together with the Jacksonville Beach..." It's right here. "Working in the Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue Division from the location of the American Red Cross Lifeguard Station to save the lives of residents." That is what's known as impermissible political rhetoric because it is not, A, necessary to the legislation. It is not supposed to be. And it is essentially advocating a political view that that's what these organizations do, and that's why we don't allow it. You wouldn't have an amendment that said, "This is a really good amendment because..." and expect that language to survive. By adding language like the life, continuing the lifesaving work, you're making a value detriment on the amendment. That's not appropriate. It fails to inform voters of the true purpose, to effectuate relief, which we already know is being sought through pending litigation. This wasn't disclosed in the organizational documents of the petitioner committee. But we know there's pending litigation. That will resolve these issues and the ongoing dispute regarding provisional services and the Department of Labor regulations. And it fails to inform voters of the costs of preservation of services, the loss of public property, and exposure of the city based on this amendment being adopted. What they like to say in case law that discusses these things is a wolf in sheep's clothing. And I'm not using that colorful language because it's mine made up. That's what the cases talk about. And so that's part of the problem. We already know, for example, that with regard to the first go-round to Department of Labor, we had to pay $250,000, $300,000. And there's ongoing petition problems which have been recognized not only by the city but also our adversary in that proceeding, the guy who was also a member of the V L S C, Mr. Thompson. But it's a problem. And then last but not least, the petition itself is misleading in what the petitioners were told they were signing off on. And that's its highlighted language up here. It says, "I hereby petition the Consolidated City of Jacksonville to place the following proposed amendment to the Charter of the Consolidated City of Jacksonville, Florida." Why is that important? It's important because, again, you ought to look at the face of the petition. If 200 people behind me say, "I knew what I was signing," you would disregard that. If 200 people behind me said, "I didn't know what I was..." you would disregard that too. You would simply look here and say, "From this petition, can I determine the intent that the person intended when they signed it?" And the answer to that question, we respectfully submit, is without asking them, there's no way you could know that. And so there are cases, including one from the Supreme Court recently, 2021, in which the court, by, I think it was five to two decision, rejected language in which the summary stated as follows, this was regarding medical marijuana. And it said, the language at issue was that the amendment, quote, "Permits adults 21 years or older to possess, use, purchase, display, and transport up to 2.5 ounces of marijuana and marijuana accessories for personal use for any reason." So that's the language that was in front of the court. The petitioners challenging it said, "That word permits is misleading because federal law makes this still illegal, regardless of what Florida law says." And so by saying to someone who's voting on it, the court said the following things. It said, "First, there is no dispute here that the activities contemplated by the proposed amendment are criminal offenses under federal law." And then in the holding, we conclude that the language in the ballot summary indicating that the proposed amendment unqualifiably, quote, "Permits," close quote, "the use and distribution of recreational marijuana" is affirmatively misleading. Because the proposed amendment fails to comply with Section 101.161 Florida statutes, we strike the proposed amendment to our Supreme Court, 2021, five to two decisions. Now, that's why we think there's a problem here. Not one that can't be corrected, but one that can't be corrected today. What we want you to know, and I mentioned this early, but I want to go into this a little bit more. We consulted with other law firms. We realized this is a court decision. We support the community. We do not wish to divide the community further. We provide you as accurate advice as we can based on the information we have. And we provided that same advice to two different offerings with expertise in this area to analyze the petition, the ballot language, and provide you and us a level of comfort that we are trying to give you sound advice on this matter without, you know, regarding how the political work out. Those firms have concurred with the analysis I've best provided. And as a result, we are recommending that you not place this issue before the voters.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. We'll go back to keeper cards. Janemee, you want to come back on it?
Janemee, 1764 Maritime Land God at Atlantic Beach. Mayor, counsel, issues before us tonight, they're far beyond the relationship of the V L S C and the city of Jacksonville Beach. They speak to the very heart of the fundamental constitutional right of citizens to petition their government for change. In more than two weeks, 20% of the voters that elected you made their voices heard by signing a referendum petition. Since then, the council has continued to ignore the wishes of your constituents. Instead of following your mandated ministerial duty, you sent a referendum to the Supervisor of Elections and placed on the November 8 ballot. You willfully, you will discuss staff suggested Agenda Evans this evening, designed to delegitimize the referendum, approve spending an unspecified amount of taxpayer dollars to fight all issues related to the referendum, and challenging whether or not the Red Cross still has a claim to the land and building. Your actions tonight will confirm to the V L S C and more importantly, to the citizens that elected you, whether you believe in the democratic rights of your citizens or whether the city manager's entire agenda has been and still is to transform an easily fixed Department of Labor issue that the V L S C has already addressed in our government documents into a scheme to take possession of the American Red Cross Volunteer Life Saving Corps Station. It is in the hands of the elected council members to decide which road to take this evening. Whether stamp the city manager's agenda or to finally honor the will of the people and have this item sent to the Supervisor of Elections and be placed on the ballot on November 8. The people of Jacksonville Beach and the entire Beaches community are watching what you decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emery. Mary Phillips. You said you wanted to speak on this.
I sure did. My name is still Mary Phillips. I still live at 934 10th Street, North of Jacksonville Beach. I am still a citizen of Jacksonville Beach, and I am still not a member of the V L S C. I got to say, this is very confusing. For a citizen of Jacksonville Beach, this whole situation is just completely confusing. And so I feel misled on many parts, but I'm just going to, I'm going to put what I wrote, because that's what I wrote. In Part A of Item K, council is deciding whether to advance the ballot initiative to a vote at the next general election. As elected officials, I believe you have an obligation to listen to your citizens. There are plenty of citizens who are already disappointed with the actions of this council, specifically in regards to listening to your constituents. And now you're deciding whether you're going to listen to them by placing or not placing or moving this initiative to a general election. I just want you guys to think about that, okay? You pushed the citizens to the point where they felt the only recourse citizens had was not illegal finagling, because that you're going to do with the V L S C. But for the citizens of Jacksonville Beach, we feel the only way we can be heard is to go to a ballot initiative and back the V L S C so that you'll pay attention and listen. I'm just going to leave you with that. In Part B of this... With regard to Part Two, I'm really concerned that we are requesting authorization to legally challenge all matters related to an arising from the ballot initiative and referendum at the exact same meeting where council is voting whether to even move forward on this referendum. So, I mean, on the one hand, you haven't even decided to move it forward. On the other hand, you want to go ahead and litigate it. I'm confused. It seems the council has put this city in a position where litigation is the only solution. And it's disheartening that we couldn't work out the differences of opinion between the city and the V L S C without resorting to all of this legal maneuvering. It's most unfortunate that it's me, the citizen, who has to pay this price. Me, the citizen, has to pay the price of this fiasco that we have backed ourselves into.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Thomas Cacerro.
Good evening, council. My name is Thomas Cacerro. I live at 60111th Avenue North. With liberty and justice for all, what we've been witnessing the last nine months doesn't appear to be very just. I have yet to see or hear one viable piece of information as to why the city of Jacksonville Beach and the city council have had to disband the volunteer lifesaving corps in the first place. Not one. Nor why we couldn't continue to work together in some form or facet. First, this became an operational issue as to how we were going to continue to operate on the beach. It's quickly changed the narrative to who's getting this building, which didn't seem what was talked about in the first place. But it's becoming more and more evident through those subjective and through perception, what's happening is a hostile takeover. Voters of personal gain and corruption are the only logical responses with regards of why a group of nine people would seek to dissolve and disembowel a volunteer organization which has prided itself on saving lives, giving back to our community, and providing options and pathways that would not have been available prior for our youth. Over 19% in less than two weeks of petitioning. Less than two weeks, your voters have spoken. The citizens that voted and put good faith in you to act in their best interest are baffled. You all have a choice. Remember that. You always have a choice. And I have to say this. I understand where your attorney's coming from. I really do. But every citizen knew exactly what they were signing and what they were backing. Everybody knows what's going on. But one question that I sincerely have is, why? Why did it come to this? None of this had to happen. God bless you and be with you.
We're not doing it. Jason Gabriel?
Mr. Mayor, Jason Gabriel, Borough Foreman, on behalf of the V L S C. If I may ask, before my time continues here, can I be extended, courtesy of a little bit more time, to go over some of the issues that were discussed today?
Just go ahead and get going, and we'll see. Yes or no?
Everything said tonight by your counsel is based on two completely false premises. So there were a lot of things said, but they were based on a fundamental error in what was stated. Number one, that the property is publicly owned. That is not the case. So everything that was said related to the notion that this property is publicly owned is completely false, or wrong, or both. So the notion that a deed, I think there was a statute cited that a deed to public property, the attempt to make that to a private entity, off the table. That this is not, the request is not a deed to a public entity. It is a deed that sits in ownership of a nonprofit, the American Red Cross, with relationships to the V L S C. And this is not considered, inasmuch as the property is utilized for some public operations, it is not publicly owned. So every point that was made with respect to that, including the CRA statute that was cited, the 163 statute, which talks about the disposition, the procurement process, all that stuff is off the table. It is not related to the facts at hand because, again, not publicly owned property. The second completely false premise that was stated upon which several other things were said is this notion that you can look at the ballot, let alone the petition language, and make an assessment as to its constitutionality or legality. Completely false. This is a ministerial task that's before you. You have no discretion whatsoever to review or consider the language or the lawfulness of the petition or the ballot language that sits before you. That is for the courts. I have a stack of case law sitting in a briefcase stack there that's ready to go, and I'm happy to parlay that. So all this other stuff that was stated about the ballot title summary, the misleading nature, bogus, you've heard from people here today. Everyone knew what they were signing when they signed this petition. This is just a splitting hairs, nitpicking, hyper-technical lynching of your V L S C that sits behind me today. This impermissible political rhetoric, that's all I've heard today, is impermissible political rhetoric. That's bogus. I've never heard that before. So that's yet another false premise based on the fundamentals. And this notion that there's some language in this Supervisor of Elections petition that speaks of the Consolidated City of Jacksonville, again, not your role to look at that. But in any event, it's a template that was provided to us by the Consolidated City of Jacksonville Supervisor of Elections, not for your review. But even if they were assuming that for one moment, not a fatal defect and not anything by any means in the least way that would discount a petition, let alone the 20% of your community that actually signed these petitions. And it only stopped at 20% because we stopped counting at 20% because we had a lot, we're in a time crunch here, obviously. But we gathered what we could in the short amount of time, and that's where we are. And again, you know, there's this issue of communication. We can't talk to any of you elected officials because we've been prohibited by your counsel. I don't agree with the analysis that led to that prohibition, but be that as it may, we respected it. At the very least, we want a communication line with your attorneys. I've heard a lot of talk here today from the elected officials at the DAIS about, "We don't want this, you know, we want what's best on behalf of the community. We don't want this fight, but we're going to have to let the legal courts, you know, fight it out." want this fight, but we're gonna have to let the legal courts, you know, fight it out. It's a very simple, simple, simple resolution that we can talk about. If we only had the opportunity to talk to your in-house council and your outside council, but we have never been given that opportunity. We had a two to three minute conversation that ended poorly. And I'll tell you, in my twenty years on board certified in city, county, local government law like Mr. Shepherd over here, I have never dealt with such obstinate counsel on the other side of an issue. Believe me, I've been involved with many more, very more thorny or emotional issues. This is even the top ten of that. I would appreciate a moment more to speak to that, because I think there is something...
I'll call you back up, but we are not gonna be name-calling or derogatory to anybody in this room.
Appreciate it.
Britt Sanders.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Council. My name is Britt Sanders. My address is 59 Oakwood Road, Jacksonville Beach, Florida. First of all, I'm in opposition of spending any more of my taxpayer dollars fighting petition than I, and twenty percent of our citizens sign. I believe we would not be here today if it wasn't for the city lockout, the complete denial of working together, a mutual relationship between the two parties. I have met with most of you, and I met with most of you and urge each of you to ask the city staff to meet with the BLSC to reestablish a mutual agreement. Yes, most of you stated that the city attempted that new agreement, but we both know that wasn't any attempt. In that agreement, the city stated it could cancel at any time for any reason. That's not a mutual agreement. That's a lawful way to just check a box to say that you did it. Had we sat down months ago, we would not be here today, wasting more time and money. Today, I ask you not to fight the citizen-led referendum behind closed doors, and let's get back, both parties to the table and work out a mutual relationship together.
Thank you. Zan Thomas Williams.
It's Thane.
Thane, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I am Zan Thane Williams, and I live at 45 Oakwood Road, Jacksonville Beach. I'm not a member of the BLSC. Ladies were not invited here in my era. But it's very important what they have done. Anyway, what, I have a lot of other things that I was going to say, but this has really gotten off the racks here. I'm speaking as a citizen of Jacksonville Beach. I'm a native of the beach. I've lived in all four communities over the number of years that I've been here. And this is not the first time I've been here. There have been a number of different council people up here over the years. And there have been problems in the past that have always been worked out. I do not understand why, from the very first day, you all did not call for some kind of mediation. There was a letter that was sent from the city manager's office that I received a copy of. A lot of stuff has been passed around, as you can imagine. But I've been getting my information from a friend in Georgia who's communicating with another foreign member of the court. There was a letter from the city manager's office, and it was two pages long, all these things, right away. This was very, very early in this program. And what I noticed about that letter was, it was only on the second page in the next, the last paragraph, where the city manager mentioned what was important was the safety and of the community, of the citizens of Jacksonville Beach. And that is what the lifeguard corps has done for over a hundred years. They have looked after the safety of the citizens and the people that come to our beach. I go back to when it was known as world's finest beach. That was a long time ago branding. But anyway, I just, there is always another way to skin a cat. You know, you can go back. You can say, we are sorry, we have messed up. What is happening in our city is fact-reprehensible. You think you're in Washington or something. But you can go back and you can start over, and you can determine little things that, you know, and come to an understanding, what we need is to get this thing back on track. The citizens are tired of paying for lawsuits. I was privy to one that was because it was an organization that I'm a part of a couple of years ago. And the judge in the federal court said to the attorney from the city, you know, they have a very good case, you really should be listening. But the city, the council at that time, went ahead and proceeded with and lost. And then, this thing that happened with Townsend is just ridiculous. And you should have gone back and then done something about that then. But that hasn't happened, but you can say, we messed up, we are sorry, let's start over, and let's do the right thing this time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Rita Maris.
Rita Maris, 54th Ward, Jacksonville. I just want to follow up on a couple of things that Mr. Shepherd talked about in terms of the reported legal deficiencies. And I just, I really, a little bit like what the last speaker said, I'm embarrassed for you about the ballot title and the ballot summary. That was not even included on the memo attached to the agenda as an issue, but the more days we give you, the more things that you will find wrong with it. I think what really makes me sad, as far as that's the exception, 166.031 envisions the average, ordinary citizen playing a part in their government. I can't even imagine the average, ordinary citizen trying to play a role in this government. And that is, that's heartbreaking. There are times in my life that I am thankful for the good Lord and a judge, and today is definitely one of those. By the way, Councilwoman Nichols, we did file a lawsuit today. We literally, in all the craziness that's been going on, failed to mention that the last two times that we got up, that this will be heard by a judge. We filed a petition for emergency petition for writ of mandamus and explained to the judge precisely what needs to be done when. And I look forward to that, although, having been a litigation attorney for a very long time, it is rarely, if ever, the answer. You know why? Because there's ever, never really a true winner or a true loser. There is damage done to the parties in the interim. And your citizens, they won't forget about this. We'll go to court, you lose, and you're required to do what you were supposed to do by law. They don't forget about that. So, there is damage. It is not a no harm, no foul situation. In terms of the improper political rhetoric, I would consider that's actually what they do. But the reason that language was included is because at some point, I believe the city manager in one of his letters suggested that they would be happy to have the BLSC stick around at the lifeguard station and do a junior lifeguard camps. Maybe have some pictures on the wall and, you know, have their memorials up. And we wanna make it clear, it was actually something we thought very hard about, we're gonna be there to do lifesaving work, not to do, we wanna, we wanna work with the community. We think that's incredibly important. But that is why that's in there, not because it's improper political rhetoric, what these people do risking their lives to save the lives of others. But that's where we've gotten at this point. The Department of Labor, it's been said over and over again, again, the lady that stood here just a moment ago was incredibly wise. There are so many of these things that could have been worked out, could still be worked out, add a mediation between people that know what actually is going on, rather than an attorney that stands up and doesn't even really know the relationship between the American Red Cross and BLSC. And thank you for your motion, Councilwoman Nichols. I really appreciate that. It never hurts to have all the information when making an important decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Shawna O'Brien.
Good evening. Shawna O'Brien, 11932222. Next February, I'll enjoy my forty-seventh year anniversary being Associate of my Assistant Board. In two months, I'm gonna celebrate being a citizen of the United States of America for sixty-five years, the greatest nation in the world. The United States was founded on a radical idea that the government is powered by the permission of and for the people. Even the smallest hint that you guys are not gonna move forward allowing a referendum to happen is just my model. Forces me to wonder what you guys, how you took your oath or your affirmation when you came into office. I yield the rest of my time and possible to our BLSC attorneys.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Gabriel, would you like to address the council then?
Jason Gabriel, Borough Foreman, on behalf of the BLSC. So, on July 6th, about forty days ago, the package was delivered that had all this information in it, with an informational letter, a copy of the petition, and everything else, including naval ordinance. On July 18th, 3,820 petitions were delivered to the Supervisor of Elections. That's almost ninety percent of your registered Jacksonville voters from the last year's election to certify this proposition. City of Jacksonville had an opportunity on July 18th to follow the law, undertake its ministerial duty to place this matter on the ballot, and did not do so. You had an opportunity on August 1st to follow the law, undertake the ministerial duty to put this on the ballot, did not do so. And you do have an opportunity tonight. On August 4th, we provided the city council of council with a certified confirmation of the Supervisor of Elections letter stating unequivocally that the required number of accepted petitions was met on August 2nd, and that, and this is a quote from the letter that's in your packages, pursuant to Section 166.031, four statutes, the requirements of subsection one happened then. And that's the prime statutory provision that applies here. Today, I received no acknowledgement or communication from your attorneys regarding this matter. We do appreciate that we have an agenda that we're able to pull online to be able to figure this out and see what would be taken up here today. Again, you do have an opportunity to follow the law here tonight and undertake your ministerial duty to put this on the ballot, but as is very evident here, we've lost full confidence in any of that being able to happen by no other than your own agenda that says on it with your memo, a staff recommendation to, in the next breath, after taking up this matter, to legally challenge all matters related to and arising from the ballot initiative and referendum. So, again, we've lost all confidence in this process, no communication whatsoever. And so, for those reasons, as Ms. Mayor has brought up, we have filed this afternoon this complaint for writ of mandamus. Again, these are very, very easily resolvable issues, all of them, I submit, if we just had an opportunity to speak to your attorneys and sit down at the table and try to resolve these issues and sort through them. We wanna follow the law just as much as you do. I appreciate your time. I'm available for any questions, but I doubt I'll get any, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. There's no other speaker card, it's gonna get a motion.
Mayor, I have a speaker card on both issues, if I may.
I'm sorry. Come on up. I put you in the done staff.
I bet you did. I'm not going there.
My name is Philip Edens. My address is 1893 Hospice Road, Florida. I'm celebrating August 15th was my first day to cross the line and get into the Corps fifty-five years ago, August 15th. So, I've been associated for a little while. In that time, I have never seen such a vicious continued attack on the lifesaving corps, regardless of who was the mayor, who was on council, who was the sheriff. We've always worked together as a team. This goes beyond the pale. You said you didn't want to denigrate any language. I can't believe learned counsel wanted to compare us in his example to a petition for marijuana. There's no concept, no rhyme, rule, or reason to do that. If you've been in Jacksonville Beach for very long, you have to have an understanding of the role of the lifesaving corps. One of my friends, my firefighter buddies, as we were collecting petitions at the towers, ran into a young lady that was ninety-three years old. She said, I know what this petition is for, y'all pulled me out of the water in nineteen forty-seven. She understands it, the voters get it. They get it very clearly. They understand. We had people drive, I've worked at four different locations in that short timeframe. We had people driving to us. We wanted to find you so we could sign the petition. Why is this happening? Why are elected officials not doing the right thing? Councilwoman Nichols, you said you wanted this to come to a head, to go, to be resolved. Then, by all means, put the resolution, put the petition on the ballot. Make the move, do the right thing, and it can be resolved. I do have a question, and you may or may not be able to answer it under strict language. If it says, "Approval disproved, disapproved, advancement of a resolution for consideration at a special council meeting." What resolution? Is a resolution somewhere that has been put forth?
We don't get into a back and forth.
I just asked, because I asked the Corbin, there is no resolution to be put there. I wish there were, so we could at least have an understanding of it. Again, I urge you to put through our proposal on the ballot and disapprove the authorization to legally challenge all matters related to and arising from the ballot initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Edens. And just so everybody understands, the resolution would be subsequent to the decision on this, so there's not an existing resolution at this point. It would depend on how we voted. I think that was the last speaker card. We'll go ahead and get a motion, Mr. Nichols.
Understood. We approve advancement of a resolution for consideration at a special city council meeting.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Dumont.
Thank you. I agree that the BLSC has been an integral part in the community. You've done wonderful things, you've shaped and been an extremely positive influence on generations of youth. But that's not what we're looking at here. So, what we're trying to do is figure out how we move forward. I know you wanna get this ballot on the, get this item on the ballot, but then there are other concerns that we have to think about. One that concerns me is there was no cost to the citizens if this were to pass, because in the last ballot initiative, which a council member, current council member was behind, there was no cost, no cost to the citizens on that one either. And I think if citizens see what the potential legal costs are behind approving something and putting it on the ballot or not, that really opens their eyes, it's not a no cost. So, that said, Mr. Shepherd? What is the cost differential? What are the costs that we're looking at if this were to get onto the ballot and then be approved to the voters? And I know that you can't give me a hard dollar, but what are the, what are the factors that could open up the city for potential litigation? Not litigation between the city and the BLSC, but the city and the DOL or employees, things like that, that larger picture?
Well, there's a number of them we've identified, and being able to put a number on them is gonna be hard, but I'll give you an example. One of the things that has been communicated to BLSC through the city manager's office is that the city owns these vehicles that are used by the BLSC. I believe that we own most of the equipment, maybe not all, but most of the equipment they use for their activities. And when you have that equipment, you have that liability. So, it's not that the services are being provided for free on Sundays and holidays. It is that without using their own equipment, then the city becomes liable toward any problem for that equipment, when it might not have been the party using it, driving the vehicle of someone who drove it or someone in the sand or something. So, that's one example, and that's just one category. The other problems, obviously, are costs regarding to what goes on with the Department of Labor. Now, it has been stated here, and you'll just assume that I disagree with that, because I don't wanna, nothing's gonna get solved here. However obstinate I may appear, it's not gonna solve anything. But what I will tell you is that there is more than one way to view the situation with the Department of Labor, particularly given the depth that they went into explaining how they found the relationship with BLSC coextensive and the liability that creates. And some of the language that we are aware of about comes from their own member, who happens to be suing us right now, who is Sir Thompson, who is steadfastly against this amendment, as well as other relationship with BLSC. So, I can't put a number on it, I'm not a finance guy. Yeah, if you were just asking about litigation, I'd have a better... Yeah, if you were just asking about litigation, I'd have a better shot. But as we found out, there's already one case that's pending that was brought by V L S C. There is now a second case against the city that's been brought by V L S C. And I should point out, the city has sued no one. All the city's tried to do is find a way, as it started, to keep from getting back to the same situation that brought this to the city to start with, the Department of Labor. But for that situation, whether it's wise or not, it's a different matter. We probably wouldn't be here, but that's where we are. And so you have a relationship that's been forged over a hundred and four or however many years it's been, that's never recognized the changing patterns around it, like the existence of the Department of Labor. These things happen. That doesn't mean they're not painful or legitimate, but they happen, and I think that's where we are. So there's an unknown price tag. It could be expensive. Maybe it could be mitigated in some method by having V L S C pay for insurance. I don't know. Those are things that are policy decisions, but they're certainly not without cost.
Okay, the.
Madam Mayor.
No, I'm sorry. The public comment time is over, and I do need everybody to keep it down. It's very distracting. I'm sorry, Jim. I'm pretty sure what Jim is going to say is they do carry their own insurance. So I'll say that for you. They carry their own insurance, but that insurance doesn't cover everything. So what we're doing up here is trying to figure out how to protect this city because that's our role, is to act in the best interest of the city with regard to getting sued. I agree that the communication could have been, I wish the communication was clearer and more open. That's already been discussed. The, so another question I have for you is, it was brought up that the station is not public property, so it wouldn't fall under the redevelopment, the C R A criteria for disposing of that property. Now, right now, could this V L C, could the Red Cross sell that station with us owning the land? Well, with us having deeded them the land?
Right now, if we deeded them the.
No, like right now, like they, it's that they have the land, they have a building on it, and a revert clause before it ever reverts, could the Red Cross just sell it?
If the Red Cross sold the building under the current dictates of the deed restrictions, the answer is no, they couldn't. Because by selling the building and abandoning the premises, they're no longer providing the services there by whatever definition you want to put on it. So that's a problem for them to try to sell it under the current circumstances. And the issue that invokes one sixty-three-three-eighty, honest, I do not know. Gabriel's certainly a qualified lawyer, but I do not know what he means when he says it's not a public building. It is owned, at least in part, by the city. Arguably, it is owned by the city right now, which is why I told you that I believe the reverter has taken place by operation of law. But even if that were not to be true, that's why I took the time to read the statute, prior to disposition of any real property or interest therein. Now, if we go back, can you pull up, is there a way to pull up the language again? I don't know if something I can do. Okay, going back here to the second section. "The city shall immediately execute a new deed of conveyance, permitting the American National Red Cross to convey a simple absolute interest in the station and the property on which it sits." Now, the reason obviously they're asking for this provision in the amendment is because they know that right now the American Red Cross could not convey the simple absolute interest in the station and property on which it sits. That's why this is in the amendment. And it says, "With the city of Jackson Beach retaining no title or interest in the property." So for the sake of this discussion, assume that they're right, just so I can make the point. We still have a reverter interest. That is an interest therein, and one sixty-three-three-eighty is revoked. It's not about whether it's public property, it's about whether we have an interest in the property that's in redevelopment interest therein. And whichever side you believe, whether you think it reverted automatically as we do, or whether you think it may not have reverted, but we still have a reverter interest, either way, that statute applies. So that's the situation. And that's why they're asking for this language. And I would point out here, just so it's really clear to everybody, if this were to pass and the Red Cross got this deed from us and we got rid of all the other issues, nothing would stop the Red Cross from selling this building based on this amendment. This amendment places no restriction on the Red Cross in what could be with the property from now.
And my final question is, just for clarity, for my clarity and for everybody else's clarity. Option A, we move this forward. Option B, we don't. What is the process on both of those? Because there will be litigation either way.
There is litigation.
Right. And so what does the process look like?
Okay, so let's assume, because there are two parts to this item. One is to make the decision to let it go to the voters. And then if you authorize part B, then depending on either the outcome of the referendum or alternatively, the outcome of litigation, which you may authorize, which could still have the effect of challenging it and potentially keeping it off the ballot. That's how this narrative works. Because when these things happen, a couple of different ways judges look at this. Number one, they would say, okay, if there's not a challenge right now, the city's decided to put it on the ballot, but we bring a declaratory action. That's typically how it would be done. And we say, we've done what we think or the officials thought they needed to do ministerially. However, there are some real flaws here that we want to bring to the court's attention because we don't want to get the public to be misled about what's happening here. And we think here are the reasons why this should be tossed off the ballot. Some judges would say, I might wait to see if the voters, even if they see problems. I've had this happen where they say, we see a lot of problems here. I see a real problem with this thing. There's a lot of different issues here. But the voters may vote it down, and I don't have to make this tough decision today. We'll see the outcome, and let's see how it goes. Another opportunity is the judge is going to be persuaded by these cases and others. There's a lot more and these issues and say, this really isn't appropriate to keep sending to the voters when I can see on its face, this is not going to work. And we'll pull it and say it's not going forward. Then they're subject to appeals and all this. So those are the two paths. If you, on the other hand, say, we're going to put it on the ballot, if the voters approve it, we're going to figure it out, then that's also an alternative. And I'm not trying to make the decisions for you, but that is an alternative. By that way, we wouldn't at least have to litigate the mandamus actions because we'd be doing it. We would still, I guess, litigate the other issue unless you change your mind about whether or not we had the right to remove the V L S C when we did by some of the actions of the manager when we saw it was a risk to safety. And I guess it should be pointed out here, six days a week, six days a week, the city provides these services. Only one day a week in holidays does V L S C provide these services. And what we haven't heard from the podium, at least from I've been here, is anyone saying that the city's not doing its job six days a week. And so it is kind of a situation which has a, kind of the air about it of the one-day-a-week party who is upset, understandably so, about something that it perceives as a change controlling the safety of citizens basically all the rest of the time. I think that's important because.
Thank you. Mr. Mesa.
Oh man, this is not an easy, this isn't easy. When I ran for office, you know, I knew we were going to be faced with challenges. I moved here to Jackson Beach almost twenty years ago, and there's a lot of things that this city, this community thrives on, and adds pride. You know, Fletcher graduates stay here, grandparents that have gone to Fletcher, and their grandkids have gone to Fletcher. So there's a tight bond here. I completely understand the value of the V L S C as offered towards city for the past one hundred and ten years. I'm not anti-V L S C, and I appreciate everything that they have done for the community and what members, past members have done with their lives. Now here, we sit here, the DIES, and we have to adhere to the Department of Labor findings. That's all we're trying to do right now. We as a city, we as a city do not have the authority to disband the V L S C at all whatsoever. As far as I know, if I'm correct, and maybe one of you on the DIES may correct me, the V L S C five oh three nonparticular is still going on. We did not put a stop to the V L S C in legal terms. We all have received emails regarding this issue. No matter what happens here tonight, it's not an easy choice for any of us here at the DIES, whether we say yes or whether we say no. Many concerns come to O'Brien. Legal consequences by the Department of Labor, and God forbid, the Justice Department decides to come to the city. Now, I hear you guys making comments in the back, which I get it. If I was in your shoes, I would be doing the same thing. But from my perspective, there's a lot at stake right now, not just. There's a lot of things going on, and this, for me, this decision is not taking my lead, and it's very heavy on me. Because I have friends who are part of the V L S C, who used to be part of members of the V L S C, and I know I continue to do good with our lives and be productive members of this community. For me, it's, there's a lot right now. I'm just losing my train of thought, and I have many questions, concerns. I know none of us here in the DIES, and I know I speak for myself. We didn't wake up and say, hey, let's get rid of the V L S C because that is not the case. And I just heard someone, but it's not true. There is no gain from the city of Jackson Beach, if I'm correct, of stopping the V L S C. There's no gain at all whatsoever. Many of you here have been residents and community members of Jackson Beach for many, many decades, many years. Now, Mr. Shepherd, I know my colleague, Georgia Newman, who I, her and I sometimes don't see eye to eye on things, but she does bring ballot points, and as you will hear from us too as well. I know, Cliff, Ms. Dumont asked the economic impact. You know, we have A, we vote it, put it on the ballot. B, we do not. No matter what, we're still, we're already facing litigation. We're about to face another one. Can you expand on that even more?
I'll do my best. I would anticipate, they didn't mention it, but I would anticipate it's probably what I would do where I'm representing their clients, that one of the next steps, if they can't get an emergency hearing on the mandamus, they might attempt to get an emergency hearing on a temporary injunction. It's essentially the same effect where the court conducts a hearing and tries to determine the probability of success on the merits as to whether or not that amendment should go forward. Because of the time, at least in terms of November eighth and the dates that we are provided through the Supervisory Elections Office, if the injunction were into telling us it had to go forward, then there would be not enough time in all likelihood to get that reversed on appeal, even if it was likely that we would succeed on appeal. Secondarily, the court could look at that matter, again, assuming that it gets scheduled or able to get it heard, and say, no, I'm not going in on injunction. And likewise, I would think, I think they would say, although, now I'm sure they're fast, that they could not likely get an appellate order getting this on the ballot in the short time that we have been given by the Supervisory Elections for all this to go forward. That doesn't mean that the issue would go away because there's two different ways this can get on the ballot. One is a general election, which is what they requested, but it's also by special election. And there's a good argument to be made that that discretion, as to which one it goes on, regardless of the petition resides with you guys. So it's very possible that even if the hearing doesn't happen fast enough, the judge can't accommodate it, or doesn't think it's an emergency, or whatever the situation, that ultimately it'll play out if you don't agree to put it on, and a decision will be made, and if it's against us, and if it's too late for the general, then you would be asked to fund a special election postpartum to look at this amendment. And if the judge says, no, I think that it was right to keep it off, then subject to appeals, that would end the matter. Would there be appeals? Maybe. I don't know. I'd certainly say that our indications are that there is a special visitation to litigate. So that, if you ask me what I assume, I would assume there would be appeals, but how it'd end up, I don't know. The law we've decided to be comfortable with, I've looked at it multiple times and with multiple other lawyers who are not maybe close over. So that's where we stand. In terms of the costs of those things, sadly, this is not something that's covered by an insurance policy for the city. It's not as if someone tripped and fell on sidewalk, or hurt themselves on playgrounds, or something like that, injured a city vehicle. This is going to be whatever it costs the city to pay for my services or it's not me, someone else's. You know, that's basically how that works. And what could it cost? It's really hard to say. If the skirmish ends at a temporary injunction, it's going to cost, you know, several thousand dollars and maybe, you know, twenty, thirty, who knows? It could be more than that. But if it continues on with appeals and so forth, it could certainly run up into six-figure territory in not too distant future, if that's possible. And that's not talking about the other case, which is going to be set for trial, we believe sometime in April or May of next year, based on an agreement over that we have with the lawyer representing the V L C in that matter. They were having a hearing sometime in September, I think that's what I recall, to try to work out the details of trial thing. And there'll be discovery, and there'll be depositions and a whole lot of the stuff that is an issue in this case will be met in that case as well. And that actually has the potential to long-term cost more money than this because there's plenty more issues at stake. There's the Department of Labor and all the law involving that. There's the actual testimony that we have had from members of the V L S C, members of our own city staff, and other members of our National Beach Ocean Rescue as to what happened on certain dates that the city administrator or city manager decided that this was an untenable situation and said, we need to take the stations control until we can continue to provide lifesaving services, which we are now doing seven days a week in holidays. So all of those things will play out in through a process called discovery. There's depositions, there's written derogatories, and a whole lot of other stuff, and those can get very expensive. I recently saw, late, middle of last week, a case that had been pending since two thousand and fifteen. And at that point of the sudden, the fees of that case, which the issues were substantial, that was like eight hundred thousand dollars. But of course, this will be out in fifteen, so. You just don't know because litigation, death, and flows. This first case, the one that we're talking about, the mandamus case, that's going to go pretty quickly based on the pressing deadlines of the election. The other case, we know will go to trial in the earliest, till probably, like I said, April, May of next year. There can be a lot of litigation, and there are also opportunities to mediate. Somebody said, why do you mediate? Well, we don't really know what the parameters of mediation would look like, but we certainly can sit down, and we've discussed it with Mr. Alexander, and the motion is fair. So that's not an issue. And it is sort of the right context because it deals with contractual issues and the practicalities of a lot of things that are trying to be covered here are in that case.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes. So when it comes to this issue, I think I agree with my fellow colleagues that this has come a long way, really fast, and here we are with a lot of unsolved resolution. As much as I'd want to see the V L S C put in place, we're now faced with making a decision on a referendum. So I'm not an attorney, but I can fall back on twenty-eight years of law enforcement experience, and I'm going to do that tonight. One of the things that I learned early on as a law enforcement officer was, and as a supervisor, if the commanding officer gave me an order and it was an unlawful order, I cannot support it. I'm told not to support an unlawful order. So I won't support it, it's an unlawful order. When there's direct conflict with the Florida State statutes on the referendum, how can you support it? It has to be in line with the Florida State statutes in order to support it. I've taken advanced law classes when I was in the Jackson Sheriff's Office. We were expected to follow the law. So we took, gave rest of that several times tonight. Follow the law. Well, this is an opposition of the law. How do you support it when it doesn't, is not protected by Florida State statutes? Furthermore, the petition where it says, quote unquote, "Working together with the J V O R means working alongside and together in substantially the same manner." The parties have historically worked together. Well, that's why we're here to begin with. We can't do that because the Department of Labor said we can't. And our citizens and our taxpayers have suffered as a result of this. So you want me to pass. So you want me to pass a referendum that says, hey, let's continue to suffer at the hands of the Department of Labor because we're going to continue to do what we did before, which was wrong? So that has to be rewritten in some form or fashion that makes sense to clarify the language of what has happened in the past. That's the way I see it. And I'm glad you brought it up because it wasn't until you brought it up, we do have lifesaving, lifeguard saving services on the beach, now six days out of the week. So it's not like they're unprotected. And that's the kind of the untold message that's trying to be conveyed, which is not true. So I have, I have a difficult time supporting a referendum that's in direct conflict with the Florida state statutes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, a couple things. First is, you know, when I look at it from the surface, I see an ethical dilemma. Correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been a while since we signed it, but our oath is to uphold the law.
That's right.
And, you know, the ethical dilemma is what to do when that is potentially illegal, such as this situation. The law is, you know, section 166, but what is, you know, potentially illegal? And so, you know, first I'd like to say, you know, just because it doesn't go on the next general election doesn't mean there isn't an opportunity for a special election, which you pointed out. There's also an election in March. It's a lot of elections. There's always elections. And, you know, second off, I'd like to point out, you know, the first, the first requested action is to advance a resolution for consideration as special city council meeting. On our own procedures, if that were to be denied, and bear with me for one second, I want to pull up Sandy's email, she sent it to me, Sandy Robinson, not Golding. That the, a council member may request a special meeting by calling the city clerk, stating the reason for his request. City clerk, hold the other members of the council. If majority agree to request the council member, the meeting will be called by the clerk. There is at least 48 hours previous written notice given to each council person, but if it is a emergency, that can be waived. And Sandy Robinson, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's to paraphrase that last part. So, you know, just if it gets denied tonight, there's still opportunity to call a special city council meeting. Any one of us could call it. But I want to point out two things that the attorney said first, Miss Mayers, that it's always important to have all the right information. Number one, I don't think that we have all the right information. We have information saying it's illegal, we have information saying it's not illegal. I, I don't know. Which one, which one is it at this point? Also, our, you know, Mr. Gabriel said it's for the courts to decide whether the info is valid. I believe that. And that, you know, it's not for, you know, I can't decide if the info is valid, there's case law precedent, whatever it may be, but the judge has to decide that, not, not me in my opinion. And, you know, to me, we need to know if it's lawful under Florida law to advance it. I can't support it if it's not lawful, it's an ethical dilemma. And, you know, if the judge says that this is lawful, then we'll fully, I'll fully support it. And if they can make it to the November 8th ballot, great, if not, fully support a special election. If it's unlawful, then we, it can't go to the election. And that's, you know, at that point, you mentioned mediation, legal resolutions can't be met. So, you know, at this point, I think really, you know, the only thing we should be considering is whether, you know, the lawsuit's already been filed, do we need to fight the lawsuit so we, so we get the facts, so we get the information to make the informed decision? I don't know what the informed decision is right now. Based on, you presented plenty of appropriate facts that I understand, but until, I think until a court and a judge says that this is lawful, then I'm faced with that ethical dilemma of upholding the law. What is, what is the law?
Ms. Golden?
I just want to, to make it very clear that, and I think my fellow colleagues have said the same thing, I'm not trying to do away with the V L S C or disband the V L S C and I, and, and none of us here want to disband the V L S C or do away with the V L S C. If there is a legal path forward to keep working with the V L S C, I want to pursue that. But based on, and now I've read the D O L documents from the investigation and it, it's a lot of information there. And also based on our attorney's concerns, I'm not sure that there's, that there's a legal path forward at this, at this moment. Now, some comments have been made over time and I think that what, what bears bringing up is that a lot of people do not understand that there's actually two separate groups of lifeguards. Because I, I'm one of those people. I mean, I've lived here for 22 years and until this issue came up, I will have to be very honest with you, I didn't realize that V L S C, you know, volunteered one day a week. And when somebody says that they were saved by a lifeguard, were they saved by V L S C lifeguards or were they saved by city lifeguards? It doesn't really matter because it's a public service, it's a, it's a public safety service that our city has been providing and the volunteers have been providing and it's important. And we all recognize that. But this D O L investigation has really, really caused, caused all of this. And unfortunately, the D O L says there is, there are problems and we, we have to address those problems. One of the things I want to mention is looking at the referendum language and my colleague here read a section that's very concerning to me where the referendum says that, that they would have, that the means with, let's see, working together with the J V O R means working alongside and together in substantially the same manner. The parties have historically worked together, including but not limited to the cores providing lifeguard services on Sundays and major holidays. Okay? I've, I've done some research and found some really good information about the Fair Labor Standards Act and talking about volunteers and what's an employee and what's a volunteer. And it's, it's important to, to mention this, that it states that the Fair Labor Standards Act is the statute that governs which workers are considered employees and which are volunteers. And then it goes on, it goes on to say that there are, according to the U.S. Department of Labor, there's factors that must be true for someone to be a true volunteer. And one of the things it says is no regular employees have been displaced by the volunteer. And it goes on to say, although volunteers can help build program capacity, they should never be used to substitute for paid personnel and are not a substitute for adequate program staffing levels. And I think this puts us in a very difficult situation and that's why we are where we are. And I don't know if Mr. Shepherd, if you can speak to this a little further or not. I know we're in litigation and maybe there's some things that you can't talk about, but I think this is the crux of it. And that, and if, if this referendum were to pass and this says that we have to work alongside the V L S C and, and the V L S C is allowed to provide lifeguard services on Sundays and holidays, then it sounds to me like we are still violating the Fair Labor Standards Act and there are consequences to that. And so can you expand on that?
This, this precise issue is one of the things that will be at issue in the case that's currently pending. The V L S C labor attorneys, Mr. Alexander and folks that work with him, Mr. Chauncey and others, have taken the position that they could easily just kind of wave the magic wand and this all would have gone away. And I certainly don't underestimate Mr. Alexander with high school, we were in the same graduating class at the school, high school. But the problem is, the question you just raised is one that has no answer. It has no answer because as we know, sitting here today, this city is providing those services, those same services, seven days a week and on holidays and without the V L S C. That would fit the definition of a service that we can provide, that is not, and that in order to accommodate now the V L S C, it would be a displacement, at least on those days, of city workers who would be getting hours and whatever the benefits that are they go with that. There may be an answer, don't know, that's what litigation's about. But it's one of the reasons why when, for example, I was speaking with Mr. Alexander and again, others in his office, they said, well, this is an easy fix. This is easy, we'll simply no longer hire or never, we will not let city employees work as volunteers. That doesn't go to the whole issue you just mentioned. It's not about whether they are or not volunteers who six days a week work for the city and then on Sundays and holidays volunteer. That's only the tip of this very large iceberg and most of it is underwater. And the question becomes as a government, what risks do you take with taxpayer dollars to improve a point? At what point do you say, I think we just need to make a better decision going forward and find a way to do that? Now, there are ways and I'm not prepared to discuss those, where there might be a way to forge a relationship with V L S C. But in order for me to do that, it would be a situation where we might sit down, which is called a shade meeting, and I could explore some of those with you. And I'm, I'm not a big fan of those things, but in this case, it might be one of the few cases in which I, it could be a valuable thing. Not just yet, but I do think that there's potentially some value there and we can at least discuss it. Because the problem is, as the lawyer, I do not know all of the personnel issues that, for example, Mr. Stapopoulos has to deal with in trying to address these situations. So I don't want to throw out a suggestion that people will latch on to and say, that's the solution, when I don't know its impacts. But I certainly do think that in our future, and I'll discuss it with Ms. Robinson, we may, if we continue to go down this path, sit down with you in a group setting and discuss this problem and see if there's a possibility. But in order to people, for people to negotiate, and this is critically important, I understand for everybody in this room, it takes two parties who are willing to compromise. And it cannot be just one party for a difficult one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shepherd. One other thing, in my research, I, I read that, that there are stiff penalties if we, we know now, we have been put on notice by the D O L that what we were doing was a violation. If this referendum were to pass and we continued to do what we were doing, then my understanding is that, that then we are knowingly violating again and then that's more severe. Can you talk to that at all?
There are provisions for enhanced penalties for repeat violation. In certain ways, it's similar to what happens in a code enforcement action. If you have someone who refuses to fix up their property repeatedly, the fines can go from a hundred dollars a day up to $5,000. So yes, those exist and usually hinges around the term of good faith. Has the city or the, whatever government it is, the employer, have they engaged in good faith effort to try to resolve the issues? As you well know, when we were presented with the findings of the Department of Labor, the city made a decision on what's a part of it, but I understand it, to say, okay, we, we see your evidence and it's compelling and we don't want to be on the wrong side of the Department of Labor, we will try to get right and fix it. And that's what we've done, that's all we've done. And for that, we've gotten ourselves in now two different lawsuits. But at the end of the day, it's important to remember how we got here. How we got here is we were faced with a, an investigation we didn't invite by the Department of Labor that found us at fault and we could have continued up till this moment, I guess, to be litigating that with the Department of Labor. But with government, you're not like a private employer, you don't enjoy the ability to just litigate on your own dime. These are taxpayer dollars and so when you decide to tell the Department of Labor, we disagree with them, there's a price tag associated with that. And the evidence that was presented was compelling in favor of what the Department of Labor was saying and your attorneys at the time agreed. That's why we settled. That's as simple as that. There was no coercive motive, there was no dark, you know, hidden agenda. It was just, how do we get on the right side of government? Because government is supposed to be on the right side of the law. That's what's expected.
I guess the last thing I would say is that the V L S C is, as everyone said, a very longstanding, important part of our community. I hope that there is some way that we can, we can work out a relationship with the V L S C going forward that, that is legally valid for us because the V L S C is a, is an important part of our community. So thank you, Mr. Shepherd, I appreciate your additional information.
Just going to speak before I go down back to you guys at that end of the Dais. I fully believe in the right of the voters to petition government. I worked on a statewide ballot initiative in, 20 years ago now, where we did same, same fundamental actions of gathering petitions and going through a very rigorous process, including Supreme Court validation of our petition before it could go on the ballot. Voters expect that by the time something gets on the ballot, such as a petition or a ballot, or charter amendment, that it's been fully vetted, that it's legal, that it's enforceable and is implementable. They assume that. They don't feel like they need to read every word. You're a trusted person outside of Sundell and you handed them this petition, they trust you, they're going to sign it. I don't, if all you knew was that the wrong city was referenced twice, that should give you pause. There was a very fundamental mistake and it was that the wrong city was listed as the charter that was being amended. And that means something that, that negates the petition, but it certainly is something that immediately gave me pause and questioning everything else that was on those two pieces of paper after it. Everything else. If they got the city wrong, what else did they get wrong? Mr. Edens mentioned that I made a statement at one of the meetings with regards to the lifeguard station and that the lifeguard station was not in jeopardy. The reason I said that was because that was a fear tactic being used at the time, that there was a, let me see what it said, a land grab being made for the personal benefit of the council or staff. I'm not sure who was going to be personally benefiting from this, this alleged land grab. At that time, and I spoke frankly, I did not believe the lifeguard station was in jeopardy. Right now, I do believe the lifeguard station is in jeopardy. If this amendment passes and you take the city of Jacksonville Beach out of the equation under that due restriction, the Red Cross can do what they want to with it. And it says in there, the National Red Cross. So now you have someone in Washington DC making the decision what to do with this very valuable piece of property. It's not the member of the Red Cross who's been coming to the board meetings or the member of the Red Cross who used to be a lifeguard. It is someone in Washington DC. So, Mr. Edens, when I said that at a meeting, that I, that the lifeguard station was safe, again, we need it, we have to operate every other day now, seven days a week. So I did not believe the lifeguard station was in jeopardy and until I read this amendment, I still didn't and now I do. So that's the biggest concern to me, that should be, that was a huge concern for our citizens and I'm still getting emails. Don't keep the lifeguard station, they don't even really realize what the issue is, they think it's the actual building at risk. Again, it wasn't, but if this amendment passes, I believe that it will be and our, our expert guidance believes that it will be as well. And that's why the reverter clause, the timing of that letter is now and maybe we should have done it sooner, but that's why it's now and not somewhere down the road when we've gone, gone too far past, when we can do anything about it. And, and Ms. Golding, and I, and I know a lot of us, and I've spoken with many of you in this room, that we would love to find a path forward. Nobody wants to throw away this relationship. And every time I feel like we're getting sort of in the right direction, it gets taken out of our hands. We get a lawsuit. We get the ballot initiative. That puts it in the court's hands and that puts it in the voter's hands, but it takes it out of our ability to sit down and solve this issue. So I, I appreciate that you guys have opinions on what I'm saying, but like I said, we're going to be respectful while, while other people talk. So it's just gotten further and further away. So it's just gotten further and further away from the table that we can sit down at and solve this issue, but if this isn't a give and take between the audience and the dais. Is that understood? Thank you. So, again, there's, that's just, the lifeguard station and the jeopardy that it can be put in is my biggest single concern, and it should be everybody's concern, and that's my position. Ms. Dumont.
Thank you. When I'm asked about this, it's a complicated thing. Once you get the federal government involved in things, things become very complicated. And they were here because of the lawsuit against us, not you, but against us, and we had to pay out on that. How I describe it to people is, we have had a relationship with the V L S C for over 100 years. Labor law has changed over that 100 years. The relationship never changed. So instead of the city and the V L S C slowly adapting to new laws as time went on, to just be able to make incremental changes, we are now faced with making a very large change. And we need the V L S C to be open to looking very different, because the labor laws now are very different than they were 100 years ago, the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, and the V L S C knows this, where you had to start including women. It's changed. You've changed some of your internal processes, but the other issue is the relationship, and because we're, where they see us as dual employers, that ends up being very problematic. I think we can move forward, it's going to look very, very different. We understand that, and we need you to understand that. With regard to this item on the ballot initiative, I am all for democratic democracy. That's how I was brought up. We went, we voted on the budget as citizens, that was the form of government I was brought up with. So it pains me to even consider, and more than you can imagine, like Fernando's motion, I'm gonna use his motion for my, what I'm saying, because he can relate better than I am, I have a PhD in political sciences, nothing that's more important to me than government and community, nothing that is more important. That is why I am up here. I ran because that is what is critical to me. It pains me in my heart to know that a lot of citizens, and you all, want this to go before the citizens, but we're also faced with, it may be illegal. And then you can't, we cannot know, in good faith, we can't vote on something that you would be voting on at the ballot box, that we know does not meet legal standards. So we can't go back and do any changes, what has happened, we can look forward. So my specific question to you, if we pass this tonight, we let it go on to the ballot, how long, what is the process to then, because that's part A, and then part B, we pass having a legal challenge of it being on the ballot, because it's gonna be in the course, does it go on to a pause even if it were passed?
No, we would be essentially in reverse positions. They have filed a lawsuit even before you've taken action, to get you to put it on the ballot, and they are in her. If you say, "We're gonna authorize it go on the ballot, but do whatever you can to keep it off the ballot," now the rules are reversed. We, then they just start immediately by filing a petition for declaratory relief, likely maybe other councils don't know, haven't thought that part through, and try to get a hearing like I mentioned before, a temporary injunction hearing, try to get in front of a judge as quickly as possible to see if we can get a ruling that says, "No, this doesn't go forward," similar to the ruling ultimately was made in the Supreme Court case that I mentioned. However, again, I'll repeat myself just because I want to make sure it's understood. I have been in these disputes, and I have seen judges understand the issues that are being raised, even understand the validity of those issues, but wait to see if the voters are going to go down that road. Because ultimately, voters say, "We have now understood what's going on here, we do not want to get rid of the lifeguard station, we want the city to have control over it." And they vote against it, then no decision ever gets made because the road to our success fails. So judges do that. Other judges say, "I've read the law, I can see how it's been briefed on both sides, and that's how it would be, and it would be argued, and then I think this limit has no future, and I don't want the voters out there to think that they're passing something that has merit." And it can go either way. An example where it goes one way, we had an initiative, I was the charter review council of Orange County, they did their first charter review in four or five years, and it took a year to get through. One of the issues that was challenged was something that was put on the ballot, challenged by Osceola County, because they said that if they're, 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 they're in a emergency hearing, I was successful in getting it to stay on the ballot, and it passed by an 86% margin. On the other side of that equation, I've been in an initiative where we tried to keep it off the ballot, we told the court it was problematic, the court said, "Yep, it was problematic to me, but I'm gonna see what the voters do." Then voters did what they did, and then the judge said, "No, I'm throwing it out," after the fact. And it can go either way. Usually, the argument that we would make on the side of the city to not advance it is to not create false hopes, to not set out for the citizens who are already confused about what this issue really is, and let them believe that their votes are being nullified by a judge before they actually, after they voted. So many judges would say, "Look, if I concede there's a problem, my job description says I should say so now, or I should say why there's not a problem, and then let the city deal with it." But I can't guarantee how that will go, it could go either of those two ways.
Well, that's our victim case.
That's what makes lawsuits.
Okay, well, thank you. So the, I personally am opposed to this amendment, not because I'm opposed to the V L S C, because I don't think that this is something that belongs in the city charter. Because the city charter is a constitution, and this is an operational piece. So this is something that could be worked out hopefully down the road when we get to that. So I'll end up voting against this, only because of the issues with the legality part. I think you should have a vote on it, but what you vote on should be a document that actually is a legal document, so it can be implemented, not something that then has to go through a lot of court litigation to find out if it is or it isn't. So that's where I stand. But still, I thank you all for being here and caring about your community.
Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, going back to my original ethical dilemma that I'm facing is, what is the quickest way, most expeditious, to know if it's lawful under Florida law? Is it to let the lawsuit that's already filed play out? Is it to, what is it? Because that's my concern, is, I don't, as I'm sure.
Speaking just about the referendum, there's already now a filed lawsuit called a reamendations. It basically says, I haven't read, these are what they say. They say, basically, "This is an act in which you have no discretion, and you needed to do this, and you should now be ordered to deal with this." The case law says that you don't, you don't get a right by mandamus, you have to have the right, mandamus simply enforces it. And so the question that will be presented to the judge is, do they have a right to have this on the ballot based on its current configuration with the problems that I've raised? The quickest way to do that, it would be for them to set their mandamus, if they could do it by motion, I think they'll probably have to do it through a jury judge, not, I guess, I'm not gonna come out and lawyer, but that's what I think would happen, and see when the judge will hear, and how facts can get it done. Obviously, we have to be given time to appropriately respond, but, you know, maybe as early as next week they will be here, I don't know. But your question needs a little refinement, because you say, "To decide the issue." That's round one. If they lose, there could easily be a round two, called an appeal. If we lose, depending on your authorization, there could also be. So knowing when it's final, the only way you know something is final is when all appeals are over, because everybody stops, or all turns to legal, to the Supreme Court like that case did, and the Supreme Court wakes in, and then it's over. So, but the quickest way to start down that road is to play out the lawsuit that's been filed.
Mr. Mesa.
I'll make a comment. I'll make a comment first, and then I'll ask the question. Me personally, I'd like to see a clear distinction between the V L S C and the J Board if we move forward through mediation. Obviously, that's what the Department of Labor said, and that's what we need to do. Now, my question is, Madam Clerk, if you could go back to the referendum. Now, if you scroll up, right up down to the second page, just the first paragraph, right there, Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
So the first sentence, it says, "The city shall not operate in such a manner as to depart from the longstanding practice of the Volunteer Life Saving Court." Now, if I'm correct, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, or add more to it, isn't that what the Department of Labor didn't want us to do, to continue to operate?
In a short answer, the answer is yes.
Okay.
And this is, of course, the problem, because when you say longstanding practice, is that longstanding from when the V L S C got involved, or is that longstanding from 110 years ago, or is it 50 years ago? Who's the historian who's gonna tell us? I don't know. So, we didn't touch on, because it just gets you in the weeds deeper, but there's a lot about this that's vague, and trying to figure out what it would actually look like if we were to go down this road. But you honed in on one of those things.
Going, same paragraph, third line, working alongside and together, the Department of Labor said, that should be, there should be a line in the sand to where this is J Board and this is V L S C.
That's one of the issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols.
Well, my personal opinion is, you don't get the attorneys involved till it's the very last resort of things to do. Like I said before, I'm very disheartened with how this has all turned out in our community. I know a lot of people are upset about it, and obviously, V L S C keeps suing. If it gets on, if it gets on the ballot, the city's gonna appeal it, and I want to find the most expeditious way to resolve this. I think if you, like Mr. Shepherd said, that this is gonna create false hope, I think that if it does get on the ballot, I honestly believe it'll pass. I think y'all will go out and show them that y'all care so much about it, you'll knock on every door in the city 20 times. And you will get, you will read this to them, and you will give your side, the legal side from a city's perspective, protecting what the city, and trying to protect the residents, and keep out of trouble with the Bureau of Labor and everything else. So, you know, I'm gonna vote no on this, because I don't have lawsuits to hurry up and come on. I don't think it makes any sense to get on the ballot, because it's gonna get appealed. You know, I would like to see, I'd like to see all of it get, that all the lawsuits get pulled away, and us try to sit down and resolve this. I think there is a path forward, and I'm not gonna, but once a lawsuit is been filed, it really tied our hands a lot. And we're not able to talk about, I'm sure everybody in this room learned a lot tonight from the city's position that you did not know before. And I think that if we had open lines of communication, we would have been able to work this out, but moving forward this time is, and putting us about, because I fully believe it is, it is, does not lead to a legal path forward for the city. If you, if you could figure out a way to get one of these written where it is a legal path forward, where I think if we sit down and we talk about it and figure out the ways that we can tweak it to where you're not, you're not taking away the hours from city employees, and very similar to citizens on patrol or something like that, that there is a way to go forward, this is the worst way to go forward. And it's just disappointing to me, and I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no, just because I don't think, I don't think it's legal, and it can be on the ballot, and it is going to tear this community apart.
Mr. Jansen.
One more quick question. Can a referendum require a city to use a specific nonprofit? I've never seen that in my lifetime. And then what happens if this were to pass, what happens if Joe's lifeguard saving services comes in and says, "Well, we want to do it too?"
Well, I didn't, as I mentioned, there were many issues that we didn't go into, but to your point, that is one of the problems. And another way to look at it is, if this referendum, as it's currently devised, was illegal, and something that could be done, substituted out the lifeguard station, the city hall, or the police building, or the fire building, or the other works building in Astine, then, under those circumstances, if a referendum forces you to deed over any of those buildings to any nonprofit you name, I think the answer is going to be no. But that's what I tell you today.
Mr. Mesa.
So, my colleagues to my left, Mr. Stokes and Dumont, I'm a political science nerd, I don't have a PhD, but I'm a political science nerd. One of the things that I have valued for this country is the voting rights that we all have, especially as an Afro-born citizen, or if you become a citizen of this country. As a Mexican-American, I've always valued the Republican option that comes with it, especially since 1776. Just like Ms. Dumont had said, it pains her to be against something that the citizens have petitioned. And I have to agree. And I also agree with Mr. Stokes, where there's an ethical dilemma here, voting yes or voting no in this referendum. The first, the first sentence of this referendum is something that the Department of Labor does not want us to do. I, if the language is different, I will support it. Unfortunately, I can't support some of the language here, and I, it's a decision that is not easy to take, so I'm gonna be opposed to this.
Any other questions or comments from council? The motion was to approve advancement of a resolution for consideration as a special city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Stokes?
No.
Councilmember Dumont?
No.
Councilmember Golding?
No.
Councilmember Jansen?
No.
Councilmember Mesa?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Hoffman?
No, motion fails. The next item regarding the legal topic.
I agree with your approval authorization, the legally challenged in all matters related to and arising from the ballot initiative and referendum.
Second. Leave a motion in a second. Anything more to add? Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Okay, Ms. Dumont.
Okay, so now that the motion was voted down and will not be moving forward to the ballot, do we need to, does this become null and void, or because there's a lawsuit, we're going to set stuff in second place?
Because there's a mandamus, there can be cross claims, counterclaims, et cetera, et cetera, broaden that action to challenge some of the substance of what we talked about. So with this authorization, we already have the lawsuit that we're gonna be defending, we can bring the claim that we seek this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stokes?
Just to clarify, we're not advancing it at this, at this point. If it's, a special meeting can still be called, and it can still be advanced, right?
If it comes back, that the court says, let's say it says, "I need some time, it should go on the ballot, like we missed a November 8 cutoff," then yes, you could come back to it and put it on, at a special upcoming.
Just a point of clarification. As for this, because we, like I said the first time around, we've gotta know if it's lawful under Florida law, and so the only way to do that is to argue it.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Dumont?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.